Let's go around and introduce ourselves, starting with you, please, Mr. Secretary.
Dan French, Secretary of Education.
Kim Gleason from Essex Westford.
Peter Peltz from Woodbury.
Jenno Farrell, St. Johnsbury.
Sabina Broshu from Williston.
I'm John Carroll from Norwich. Thank you for being here. We're expecting, I think Bill is driving in, and I have not heard from Kyle. Kathy is going to try to rearrange her situation to be here, but I'm not sure that that'll happen. And we know that Oliver is out of town, and John is, being Town Manager of Manchester, is caught up in year-end budget tensions, and so won't be here. But we have a quorum to at least get started, and so let us do that. Just to speak very briefly about amendments to the agenda. At Item J, we have on the agenda three topics, but as I indicated to you in my communications, we will be, we're done with the topic about reporting to the General Assembly. I have whatever suggestions for changes you've made, and we'll incorporate those in the final draft. I'll talk a little bit more about that later. We also will not do anything this week, this meeting, on board norms and guidance. As itchy as I am to get us moving on that, quite frankly, getting ready for our next meeting, that is, the January information session, has become a really demanding project, and I'll tell you more about that later, so I've been rather preoccupied with that. So at this point, if there, are there any other suggestions or about amendments to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Let us move on to invite our hosts to, perhaps you'd like to come up front and speak with us? Please introduce yourselves for the record. Do you have a visual for us to see?
Yes, I do. You have some data.
Well, you're very good.
I am Kathryn Gallagher, Superintendent for Lemoyle North, and this is Eric Remmers, and he is the Director of the Tech Center. Thank you so much for coming and being with us today.
We thank you for hosting us. We're very happy to be here. We're very, for my first time, very impressed by what we see.
Oh, well, thank you very much. So I'm going to say a few words and then pass the baton to Eric, and I'll start with what we stand for, and that would be equity, access, and opportunity. And that serves as the framework for everything that we do, from conducting board meetings to our board work, to teacher meetings, to pedagogy, to student meetings, to outreach to the community. If you ask me what I do, if a community member asks me what I do, I tell them I'm an educator. If you ask one of our custodians what they do, they will say they are educating students. If you ask food services, bus drivers, our health professionals, our teachers, they will say we are here to educate students. So we're proud of many things, and we have a lot of works in progress. Going to touch briefly on Act 46 and how that is working for us, proficiencies and restorative practices. So we have an 18-member board, and initially, I think, we thought that would be daunting, although many of the members who make up the current 18-member board were part of the smaller boards. We had a couple of meetings where people sat with their towns at the big, at the big board meetings, and so I did something very elementary, and that was to assign seating. I needed to do that once, and after that, our board members sit together, they talk about each other's lives, and they have relationship. Another way that we have furthered that work is to assign each board member or to have them volunteer for subcommittees. Those subcommittees are directly in line with the educator quality standards, so we have what we call our FCC, that's Finance, Capital, and Communications, communications being technology. We have our Curriculum Committee, and they are very involved in proficiencies and the outreach that happens with that. We have Safety and Wellness, and our restorative work falls under that, as well as nutrition and just well-being, because we all know that it's more than academic well-being that we look for in our students and want for our students and staff, but it's the social-emotional piece as well. So I would say proficiencies has been a hot topic for us. I believe that we are making significant and positive progress. Why do I think that? We no longer have parents and students and teachers saying, "Oh, we want to go back to the traditional grading." What we're trying to do is infuse and educate the greater community about the world-playing field. By that I mean, we've looked at the European Union. They use a 1 through 6 scale. There is no narrative. Colleges see those transcripts. Colleges see homeschool transcripts. Colleges see narratives, and they see some traditional grading. It would be political Armageddon to backtrack from the work that we've done. We have buy-in from students. We have students doing outreach to the communities, talking about proficiencies, because they have a very clear understanding of that. They also have a very clear understanding of the difference between a proficiency-based learning system and grading and reporting. The grading and reporting piece has been filled with opportunities to, to further develop the process. We have students on that, on a work committee. We have our department heads, we have our administration, and we have board members looking at how do we want to report out what, what students are learning. I would say that we, we have gone from a place of, "We can't make these changes, we don't know what this means," to, "Let me talk about our portfolio of evidence." One of the things I've been working on with my team is to talk to the colleges, and they would like to see something consistent from Vermont. They would like to see a transcript and a profile and say, "Oh, this is a Vermont student, and this is what these scores or this report means." So I'm working very closely with my superintendent colleagues in the Winuski Group to come, come up with some common way of expressing grading and reporting. We're feeling very good about this, and we are not going to back away from this unless, you know, something else happens or something else comes down. We very much believe in the tenets of Act 77, and we are seeing our highest-achieving students, and frankly, our lowest-achieving students in the past, doing things that they would never have been able to pursue unless we had flexible pathways. So I can't say enough good about that. And the last thing I would talk about is our restorative work. We have teamed with Cheslev, and that's our medical service or community health service, Restorative Center, Happy or Healthy Lemoyle Valley, the Family Center, our Sheriff's Office, with all kinds of members to help our students access school. We had a significant truancy issue several years back. This year, our truancy rates are down 32%, and that is precisely a consequence or a result of teaming with our partners. With that, though, we see the students who would have been truant coming into school with the same challenges that they face in their, in their worlds. So we needed to bring to students and staff alike restorative work to sense, to build a sense of community. What I think is germane to all human beings is that they hunger for community, and they can do it in healthy ways or unhealthy ways. And so our big push is to do it in the healthiest of all ways, so that our children, our students, want to come to school, want to engage, care about each other, and then can access their learning. So those are the things that I think we feel most proud of. Thank you for listening, and I will pass that over to Eric.
Thank you.
I'm just going to take a few minutes of your time. I fully recognize the desire to keep on agenda and schedule as the Chair of the Sister Board at the Mont Saint Agro for Professional Educators. So what I'd like to do is just hand out really briefly just some information that we can take away. Again, I know that you guys are probably going to hang out as soon as we wrap the day, but essentially what I am giving is just a little takeaway data on Career and Tech Education. And I think Career and Tech Ed in Vermont is having a little bit of a moment, but in order for it to continue to have its moment, we need people advocating for Career and Tech Ed. As Kat just spoke about Act 77 and all the flexibility that's embedded therein, we really need people to continue to talk about how Career and Tech Ed is a part of that. So I've recently, this is just a kind of a small component of a presentation I recently gave to some of our sending school guidance counselors, special educators, really trying to push the idea that Career and Tech Ed is something that is for everyone. We're looking at messaging that revolves around the fact that our CTE delivers real-world skills, real high school experiences, and real options for college and careers, all of which are things that need to be pushed back against when it comes to some of the traditional perceptions of the old VOK Ed. In a world today where, or in Vermont today, where we're really looking at these flexible pathways, flexible options, and things of that nature, we want to ensure that people truly know that kids of all ability levels and all post-secondary goals should be considering Career and Tech Ed as a part of that future planning. So essentially, what I've given you is some data. One of the things that, that really has driven my conversation with some of our sending schools recently is the fact that, as much as we put on a great show and we tour kids through this beautiful facility, really, I wish I had an opportunity to show you guys through our programs, two of which are actually off-site. We have a, we have a site, forestry site in Hardwick and a site in Jeffersonville for our Sustainable Ag program. But we have this wonderful facility, and really, it speaks to itself in a lot of ways. But one of the pieces of data that struck me right off is that when we talk about enrollment in CTE, students, while they listen and see and are interested in all this, they listen most to their high school counselors and teachers. Those are the people that are going to do the best work for us in coming here. And sometimes, those perceptions of CTE and who is right for CTE are at odds with what we actually offer students in the state. So I encourage you, as this board, to continue to think about CTE and its offerings and what we can do for kids as a majority, as you'll see in here data-wise, of parents and students who attend or are affiliated with CTE are thinking about post-secondary, not just licensure, but, but going to college, and all of these things are all at play with our kids that are here. And the, the percentage of students that are actually thinking about college is really in line with the kids, the percentage of students who are thinking about college and high schools in comparison to CTE. So this is by no means a lesser option in any way. It is another option that gives kids the potential to have hands-on experiences with mentorships and internships that are going to be meaningful. So my little piece today is simply to push CTE and welcome you all to our great facility. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
May I just inquire, Mr. Remmers?
Sure.
First, thank you for your service on the Professional Educators Board. I'm sure you both do a lot of work with your professions, and I think that's really valuable and helpful to the state. You, I think I heard you say early on, when you handed this out, that CTE is having something of a moment here in Vermont.
I think it is.
What's that mean?
I, I think that there is a beginning of an understanding of the opportunities that exist in CTE as, so I'm formerly a high school principal. I've been in Ennisburg Falls for the last 13 years as both a teacher and high school principal. And I think that as we took a look at Act 77 and what it meant for our kids in our districts, particularly in rural environments, that we were really trying to unpack some of our graduation standards to identify where we can expand opportunities for learning in our, in our smaller communities. And in that process, I think that schools are trying to, without maybe even realize it, sort of mirror what happens in a CTE center when it comes to the sort of hands-on experiences, the internships, individualized learning, and all those sorts of things that have been happening here for, for years and continue to get better in these facilities as well. So I think that, and I wish Kathy LaVoye was here, she's a former colleague from Franklin County, and I know she's a huge CTE advocate, and I think she could speak pretty strongly to the idea that there is a moment out there. But I think the perception, there is all of a sudden a turn in, "Oh, my gosh, CTE does offer a lot more," and that itself is a moment, but we need to keep pushing that moment, that there's more to it than, than just what's happening right now.
Yeah, it would seem like it dovetails very effectively with individualized learning and proficiencies.
Yes.
Sort of a whole 'nother route for regular, so-called regular students, non-CTE students, to dip into the CTE world in connection with their individual learning plans and sort of flow back and forth between those two universes. That seems like a, a very healthy thing.
Yes, yes, I agree.
Yeah, so right place, right time.
Sure.
Yeah. Peter?
So this is, for me, a bit of like coming home. I was on the RAB board when we did all this construction, and I think it was around 2003 or, I'm not sure of the dates, but it was somewhere around there, and it was pretty exciting. We were the one of the last ones to get state aid of 50%, and it was a great experience for all of us. We took two votes to get it, but once we put out the word that we're all sharing all the districts, I don't know, there's 16 or towns or whatever that could, you know, go here. And then I was on the legislature, and Chris 46 was, in this area, I represented Moorestown. I got, I got a good taste of what the, the political, the politics here. But I, I really, I feel very strongly about the, the program here and have, you know, we, we, when the forestry program came into Hazen, I was on the board then, and it's been a terrific program. Anyway, so my, my basic question is, could, Eric, could you just list what the, what you're offering here? I'm just kind of curious.
Sure, I have to think my way down the hallway. So we have a creative media program, creative media and art. We have a computer networking program. We have allied health. We have a business administration program. We have a pre-tech program, which is designed specifically for 10th-grade students who get all four core contents in a project-based learning environment, which is an all-day program here, and they also get hands-on experience in all of our programs. We have construction. We have HVAC. We have automotive. We have electrical. We have sustainable agriculture, and we have forestry. I hope I'm not missing one. We also have a co-op, we have a cooperative experience for second years where we have close to 20 students who are working closely right now with community partners in our area.
And you're building two programs.
Yes, so we are exploring the expansion to, of an early ed program, and we are also exploring a foundations program, which would open up more access to both high school and middle school students, as it would be something along the lines of an elective experience for middle school and high school students on, based on their schedule. That would bring them into the Tech Center to get a little more hands-on with the programs that we have here.
Good. Thank you both very much for welcoming us here.
Thank you very much for having us.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kim.
With the proximity of Mundy School, how does that equate with narrative towards students from Mundy School here? Can there be possible?
There is.
So we're, yeah, we're definitely exploring what that looks like. We, we serve five high schools, not just the, the one here, absolutely. And, and so as we look at things like foundations programs, we're looking at how the immediate access of both a wonderful middle school and high school attached to us can really begin building those programs and serve as a model for how we can potentially put some of that programming in other schools, like in Hazen or in People's Academy or other places like that. So the fact that we have something that's right here, that we can, again, building the framework for us, that sort of partnership, is, is great.
... essentially sort of...
We are, well, with the exception, this is our heavy tech building over here, but everything else is, is.
That's the case in Essex as well, and I just, I think that that is a challenge with block scheduling and otherwise.
It is a challenge.
It's a challenge of the financing, and I just didn't know.
It's something that we balance with some of the, the focus and objective of Career and Tech Ed when we come to industry-level certification standards and things of that nature. We also need to ensure that we have the time with the kids that's required to make sure that our kids are safe with the skills that they're, that they're learning with. So it's walking a balance and trying to afford an option while ensuring that we're meeting that mission.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Board, next on our agenda is the consent agenda. And you will know that the consent agenda contains three parts. That is, the minutes from our last meeting, the Caledonia Central issued waiver request, and the student records with regard to Marlborough College. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's been moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there wish for discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and you've approved the consent agenda as presented. Are there any board announcements? And we'd be happy to welcome a student report.
I don't have anything specific to bring to the table. I think a lot, one of the reasons probably Kyle isn't here is schools ramping up with finals and stuff happening for some classes, and I think that proficiency-based learning is going to be a great conversation coming up, and I'm glad to input my, my experience in it and offer ideas.
Great, thank you. Any other board members' comments or reports? Then we'll move to the chair's report. I'll speak about a few topics going on in sort of offline, happening between last meeting and this one, and moving forward. With input from several of you, the annual report is taking shape. It will be distributed to legislators through the agency's distribution system on the 3rd of, of June, which is before the legislative session begins. And I will personally take paper copies and drop them off at the offices of legislative leaders and the governor's office on Friday, the 3rd. The general direction, as you all know, our annual report's a bit unusual this year in that it's as much or more about looking forward as it is about looking back. Tried to articulate to the General Assembly the sort of essential functions of the board, things like hearing appeals, which we don't do very often, but educational quality standards is certainly a vital and central function of the board. Similarly, simply accepting and executing directives of the General Assembly that come up lately, they've been coming up every year. Two years ago, we were directed to adopt a state plan with regard to merging of school governance, which, as you know, consumed a lot of time, energy, and passion. And in the current year, the board is, was by, by Act of, Act 173, directed to adopt rules for the implementation of Act 173. And as you know, we're much involved in that. So there's that piece where the board is asked to do special assignments by the legislature. Not long ago, the board was asked to develop metrics for small school grants, for example, which was a complex and fascinating topic in itself. Then there's educational quality standards. There's also the board's engagement with independent schools, primarily through the writing of rules, and then finally, the hearing function. As you know, we spoke at some length about what's not working or what's not a very good use of either the agency's time or hours. The last time Kathy, most of us have seen Kathy was when she came in to ask for approval of a snow day exemption. And that, under, under existing statute, that exemption can only be granted by this board. But frankly, the agency can assess the appropriateness of that request infinitely better than this board can, and yet it's the board that makes the decision. That's the sort of thing that, in our collective vision about reinventing the board, the board should get out of the business of doing stuff like that and leave it to a very capable executive agency to handle that and many other things that it does, where it does all the work, and we just sort of rubber-stamp their recommendations. I should say that I spent a fair amount of time in the last month at the State House. I had an excellent meeting facilitated by Peter, our colleague with the Speaker of the House, who in summary said, "I'm very interested in the idea of an independent board of education." She emphasized independent. It seemed to be a powerful element of our proposal, that there would be kind of separation between the board and the agency, and that the board would be independent and impartial in gathering information about how education's working in Vermont. And also with Lieutenant Governor, who was similarly enthusiastic. Chair of the Senate Education Committee and the Chair of the House Education Committee are both quite supportive of the vision that you and we have collectively formed. And in fact, the Chair of the Senate Committee on Education offered to introduce legislation that will enable most of that. And most of the legislation is what you'd call housekeeping stuff. Essentially, reassigning many of the duties that have heretofore been part of the board, reassigning them to the agency where they more appropriately belong. So I think that there is a, there's interest among leadership and among the relevant committees in the vision that we're articulating, this, this sort of parting of company, this separation of function, this recognition of the expertise of the agency that we do not have, and us moving into the area where an independent citizen board can be more helpful. There is also, however, in the State House, a climate of, I want to use the right word, reservations at the very least about the State Board and its performance over the last decades, decade in any case, recent years. Of course, there are some who are carrying resentments toward us because of some of the decisions made in connection with Act 46. But I think that in that case, that was pretty much unavoidable in the case of Act 46. To some extent, the board was doing the legislature's dirty work. We were, we were making real what the legislature itself had set up. And so quite naturally, the backwash on that's going to affect us. But even before that, there certainly is a residuum of distrust that stems from the board's work on Rule 2200, which work the governor directed the Secretary of Education to withdraw from supporting. And when the board kept on moving with its intended changes to the rules governing independent schools, the legislature intervened and ordered us to stop. The very idea that the legislature would order the board to cease and desist rulemaking is probably unprecedented, and it, I, I think it's... And it, I, I think it's realistic to say that it left an unhappy recollection in the minds of some of the legislators. So when the Advisory Committee, or the Sunset Advisory Commission, the proper term, which is a branch of the General Assembly, first considered, shall the board be sunsetted? In October, they concluded, yeah, right away. And they were going to recommend that to the General Assembly. And that was, in fact, their working decision. However, they were kind enough to invite the Chair to come speak to them. And I asked my colleague, Peter, to join me, and we spoke to the Sunset Commission and showed them that the board is intent upon shedding authorities that we don't use very well or we don't use at all, and becoming a more independent, impartial entity to serve as advisors and information gatherers on behalf of the executive, on behalf of the agency, on behalf of the legislature itself. And so as a result of Peter's and my testimony, the advisory Sunset Group changed their recommendation from just get rid of it to get rid of it in two years, but give them a couple of years to see if they can reinvent in this direction that they have in mind to do. So it was kind of a stay of execution, if you will. And so we have a lot of work to do in the legislature in the coming session to try to restore the legislature's confidence in this board and to enroll the legislature in sharing our vision for a board that exercises more soft power than hard power. Soft power in the sense of conscientiously doing good work and providing unbiased and fair information to policymakers, people who write laws. So that's a challenge that I'm seeking to facilitate and manage as much as possible. So how we conduct ourselves will bear upon the impressions we leave with the General Assembly. One final thing I want to just note is that perhaps many of you see all this, that the town, you recall, the town of Barnard came here and requested our permission to seek to join the Windsor County, Windsor Central MUD, M-U-D. That's a term that you luckily do not know, but those of us who were on the Act 46 group did learn all about MUDs, Modified Union, Modified Unified Union School District. And the community of Barnard did vote in favor of joining. And so that Modified Union District now becomes a union district. And all of the kind of logical and appropriate towns are part of that governance unit, which is, of course, the whole goal of Act 46. I think that the fact that the community of Barnard, which was very skeptical about casting its lot with the rest of Windsor Central, benefited from having the time to sort of process through this. And on their own, came to a decision to merge with their neighbors. And so I think, I'm very pleased for the two women who presented to us, Karen and Pam Fraser, who frankly were the heart and soul of that effort. They put a huge amount of effort into it. And if you recall, when we left here, I said, "You, you've done very well. You don't have a lot of leverage and you've done awfully well." And they brought, they brought the game home. And I think it's, it's quite a wonderful success for that community, for the whole Union District, and even for Act 46 itself. So I will leave it there, and I think we're on schedule or reasonably close to schedule to hear from.
Can I just make a comment in regards to legislative, one thing you didn't mention is the critical issue of funding. And if we do go independent, that's going to take legislative action, and that, that is going to be critical.
Yeah, I agree, Peter. It's going to be a heavy lift. My sense from talking with the chairs of the committees is that the big goal of this session is to get legislative consent and support for the vision. But it's doubtful that there will be an answer to the resources problem this year. I've certainly not given up on that, but, so the board could find itself without support from the agency and yet not having had legislative direction for some additional funds. I'm already starting to work on how we would bridge our way across to a place where ultimately the, the General Assembly directs funds and resources to us, independent of the agency. And I think there are some ways to achieve that. It'll be tight sneakers, but I believe we can do that. And I do believe that if we do our work well, by the next legislative session, we will have a, a General Assembly of believers. And people who say, "You know, this is good. You guys are providing a valuable set of information to us, and we're willing to help pay for it." So I think we'll get there, but we probably won't get there in one step. You're right. Mr. Secretary, we're happy to hear from you.
Good morning. Just as a quick follow-up to the welcome message from the local leaders, just make the comment that one of the structural changes we did within the agency last fall was to include the CTE team inside the Pathways Division of the agency. So the agency is largely organized on division basis, which comprised about 20 to 30 personnel. The CTE team was outside of the Pathways Division, so to the chair's observation, how these sort of things fit together, we've acknowledged that as well in our, in our structural changes within the agency and have aligned the Pathways work, which includes proficiency-based learning, flexible pathways and so forth, by including the CTE team in that division. So it'll be interesting to see how that unfolds. The, but good morning. Yes, this is a very impressive facility, and it's great to be here. The, one, one item I'd just highlight quickly, last week, we did an announcement, which is sort of the beginning of an emphasis on literacy for the agency. We announced a partnership with a company called Metametrics to report our Sback scores out and, and something that are called Lexile and Quantile Frameworks. So it's a, it's sort of a lingua franca, if you will, of assessment scores that allows us the potential to align some of the benchmark assessment activity that's going on at the local level in many districts, pre-K through 3, with Sback scores. So most, most districts use some sort of commercial benchmarking product in pre-K through 3. By reporting Sback scores in Lexiles and Quantiles, it allows us potentially to, or allows the locals to align those scores to basically create a data continuum of the early grades. There's also a significant number of resources that come on the Pathways Initiative relative to the conversation we heard this morning. Lexiles and Quantiles have been aligned and analyzed from a career pathway perspective. So we have entry-level Lexile and Quantile scores for most career pathways in the United States. So it'll help with student goal setting relative to personalized learning plans. For instance, if a student were interested in pursuing a career in sustainable agriculture, we have Lexile and Quantile scores for the entry-level reading and math skills required to be successful in that career pathway. And a student could then analyze where they're at now, say, in a seventh or eighth grade, and then project out where they need to be relative to be successful in those pathways. So I think it'll be a useful tool. At this point, it's the beginning of a conversation for me as secretary, which began as part of Act 173. In the report, and particularly the DMG report, that was one of the foundational pieces of the 173 initiative. It highlighted Vermont's need to pay attention more to our literacy outcomes. We've seen a really concerning trend in our Sback scores over the last several years, and that certainly, I think, was confirmed with our NAEP performance. So I, you know, it's part of our efforts to highlight that concern. And we'll be working with legislative leaders in the coming session to introduce some language around putting greater emphasis on literacy. And look forward to your, the board's involvement in that as well.
Before you leave that, have, have we received the Sback score results for this year?
We have them. We are still processing them for analysis.
But has the board received that? Has the public seen them?
No.
And why is that?
Because we have to disaggregate them based on the school-level demographic information. And that information has been slowed down, you know, we have a statewide reporting system, the Automated Reporting System, SLDS. This year, we had all, more or less all the districts except for one make that report on time. At this point, just recently, we had that final district be able to report their information. So until we get all districts to report it, we can't disaggregate the data.
How about if we see the aggregated data?
I'm not sure to what extent we can do that until we have that demographic analysis. But we'll be making the Sback report and announcement after the holiday season and when we're going to release the data.
You, you mean that there's no, the Sback doesn't report a statewide result?
Until we do the analysis on it, I do not believe so. We have to arrange the data. The districts have their local data and have had it in through the Sback Dating Portal, but we haven't been able to do the statewide analysis until we get the underlying demographic information from the districts.
But parents get.
That's correct. Parents in school districts.
They get it statewide and they get their, their district.
Yeah, I mean, inside the portal, there, that information is provided.
So the board has not received that report that's on the portal?
We have not provided it to anyone yet. That's inside the portal.
Yeah, so accessible to whom?
Parents, school leaders, teachers.
But not the board?
Not to the larger public until we pump it in through our demographic analysis. We have to break it out by, you know, trends based on male, female, the different, different groups, special ed and so forth. We need the underlying demographic data in order to do that analysis.
Well, in the past, we've gotten a statewide general report. It seems to me it was in May or June of the year. And we've not, so if we've received that in the past from the state, from the agency, why is it this year we're not receiving?
You did not receive it last year that way, once again, for the SLDS issue.
2018.
So since the SLDS is implemented, you have not received that information on schedule that you were typically used to.
Go ahead.
My kids have now aged out of this, but I do remember getting the letter where you would get your students' results and you would get, I thought, a state result.
It is the state, state and your district.
State and district.
But it's not broken out.
Right. We can't do that analysis until we get the demographic information from districts.
I appreciate that. The, the number exists somewhere, though, the parents are getting it on there.
Right. I suspect you'll see over wall, overlying, you know, state achievement on grade four or whatever it is.
Right, something like that.
But we don't, the state reporting that we typically would do is predicated on the demographic information from districts. And we can't do that till we receive all the information. We now have all the information. Just recently, we received it from the remaining district. But now that, that, with the SLDS, what that means is now we go back and we'll go through an error-checking process with locals to make sure that the data, that, once it's all in, we can sort of freeze the information, then take it down and send back error reports to the district. So we're going to be announcing a, a process by which we go through that error-checking here after the first of the year.
So parents are able to see the statewide score, but the board is not?
The board does not have access to that data inside the portal.
Well, I guess I'd like to ask that you make that accessible to the board. And after all, the Sback score is, is somehow connected to, or we think of it in terms similarly to the NAEP score. Downward trends in NAEP followed by trends up or down in Sback might inform the public and the board. Not about the particulars, of course, but a general and overall trend. It's a little hard to see why that wouldn't be, at least statewide, of interest to policymakers and to the general public.
Oh, there's no doubt it's of interest. It's a question of whether mechanically we could produce the report. I'm not saying it's not of interest.
Well, I'm still confused. If you can indicate to, to parents what the statewide average is and the district average is, why can that information not be made available to this board?
So the test is administered online through an online testing system. As soon as those results are in and frozen, parents in districts have access through that portal, through the aggregated results. That's not where the public access resides. We have to take that data and then interact it with demographic data from the school districts to do the standard statewide reporting that we do. So we can't do that piece until we have that stability in the demographic data. We wouldn't want to be releasing results that are not accurate.
Okay. Do you have anything else to report?
No, I was going to just highlight the literacy initiative, and I think it is something worthy of putting on the board's agenda. Once again, I think we can, we can trace the concern through the studies that informed Act 173. And from my perspective, a lot of the conversation on 173, and rightfully so, has been focused on the rulemaking process. But there, there are, there are opportunities for us to have a conversation about improving outcomes for students, and specifically on the literacy issue. Because some of the findings of the DMG study in particular point to, you know, some, some of our efforts where we need to focus professional development and resources to improve outcomes. So I think it's worthy of highlighting as a separate policy issue outside of 173. But it's, it's going to be a very important aspect of our work in the coming months.
You referred to literacy several times, but my impression from your press release was that this also applies to mathematics.
That's correct.
So is there a math piece that's separate and apart from all this, or?
Not, not currently. I think, you know, where we're looking to put the emphasis is on literacy, because in many cases, literacy is foundational for success in mathematics, particularly at the early grades. So we want to, we want to put that emphasis, and that's where a lot of states are going. I think it's going to be difficult for us to make some improvements on math initially without making the investment on literacy. But the tools that we'll be deploying inform both.
Yeah, if I recall correctly, we are, to the extent that one can draw conclusions from NAEP, we perform as a rule better in math, in, in literacy than we do in mathematics compared to other states. So it would seem that there's a pressing need for progress in mathematics as well.
Yeah, I think that's fair, but the foundational work, I think, needs to be done in literacy first. And literacy also, you know, we, we can unpack some issues around social emotional learning as well. There's a connection between literacy competence and success with students' affect and how they feel about their learning. So it's a, it's a worthy place of going, and once again, it's where most, most states spend their efforts and time.
I'd like to, you don't have anything else?
No, that's the, the.
I'd like to inquire about the state auditor's report in connection with the CPRs.
Child Protection Registry.
Right.
Yeah.
Child Protection Resource Documents. If I understand, this was sent, I don't know if it was sent to the board, but I received a copy from the state auditor.
Yeah, I believe it's been released today to the public. So you saw an embargoed copy, which should be out in the media today, I believe.
So it's okay to talk about?
Yeah, sure.
So if I recall correctly, the state auditor's report found that in approximately 8% of the cases, the agency, how would you put it, failed to?
Yeah, they were, what we're talking about is use of the Child Protection Registry, which is one of the several background check processes that the agency, as well as local school officials, have available to them to vet employees. This was an audit done by the state auditor for 2018. And so in the year 2018, the agency, in its licensing responsibilities, essentially failed to check its records on 8% of the applicants accurately. So there were errors in submitting names that were spelled wrong and so forth that, that resulted in false readings. So we had to go back and re-verify the 8% that failed to pass, and we've subsequently done that.
And correspondingly, among the supervisor unions, there was a 15 to 18% gap. I think it was 11% plus seven, 11% of this type plus another 7% of cases that were problematic, but perhaps were corrected.
Yeah, I don't know. The, the finding, I think that's the important finding from the auditor's report, is that there were approximately eight supervisor unions that failed to use the Child Protection Registry in 2018.
Yes. How long have we been, has the law required this sort of thing?
My recollection as a superintendent, this goes back to Act 1 in the Brooke Bennett case. I forget the exact year of that, but that was a pretty significant event in the state in which precipitated Act 1.
Right.
And ultimately, the inclusion of this additional tool. We've always had the fingerprinting aspect, the FBI check, if you will. And as a result of Act 1, we were provided additional tools, including access to the Child Protection Registry, which is a requirement for new employees, for all employees. Child Protection Registry, which is a requirement for new employees, for all employees. The agency has specific responsibility relative to issuing licenses, so as part of the licensing process, we're required to do those checks. I forget the exact year, but it was.
So have we been doing this, how about?
Two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight.
Could be.
So.
Two thousand nine.
Just a second, Jay. So for more than a decade, we've been doing this, and been obliged to do this. I must say, any organization that is producing an eight percent error rate, whether they're building airplanes, automobiles, or running an operating room, would find itself in a lot of trouble real fast. Now I'm speaking, that's just sort of, how can an organization, organizations that for a decade have had this responsibility be limping along at such a low level of compliance for such an important thing? Now my parent, grandparent hat comes on, and I think, so how are you going to feel in that supervisory union that isn't doing this, or in our agency that has not done it as well as it might? How are you going to feel if somebody slips through and commits another Brooke Bennett crime? It seems to me that we should have zero tolerance for failures in this area, and I, I hope that there's a sense of urgency about getting to zero, zero errors, a one hundred percent effectiveness. This happens in the rest of the world all the time. People get to ninety-nine point nine percent perfection all the time, and I think it's not unreasonable, and such a, such a powerful thing as this, the well-being and safety of vulnerable children, that we should settle for nothing less than perfection. So I, I hope you'll really bear to mind.
Yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent. I mean, it's, there's no margin for error on this issue. So when, when the report does come out, and I believe it is out today, and perhaps we can put it on the future agenda items, so the whole board can engage with it, include it in there. And I would say it is an essential function of the state auditor office to do these kinds of, you know, checks, because these processes get complex inside of bureaucracy, but there is no margin for error here, and it's simply unacceptable that, that eight percent fail to be checked properly. But inside the auditor's report, the auditor does allow us to provide a management's response. You'll see our specific responses in there, and we've, I think, put some processes in place. But to your point about the, you know, the, essentially the ten-year period, you know, this is just the narrow snapshot in 2018. One, one could expect it's been ongoing for some time. And as it pertains to the school districts, it's, it's the kind of issue, you know, Act One was a significant event in the state of Vermont, and it's the kind of thing that we have to constantly reinvigorate people's attention on. So part of our response and our responsibilities in agency is also to do a better job with the field on a regular basis to remind people of their responsibilities in this area.
Well, most highly effective organizations, public sector, private sector, continually monitor their own performance on vital indicators such as this. And I would hope that there's that capability of self-monitoring. I mean, I applaud the, the auditor, but what he has revealed is a sort of systemic weakness around a matter that is just too important to not be performing better at. So I appreciate your concurrence with the importance of this.
Yeah, and we've implemented new systems of checks and balances, so I think we're going to have better attention to that.
Yeah, good. Thank you. Yes, Kim?
Just in thinking about the metometrics and that initiative and rollout, the support to the field, I'm wondering what that will look like, just thinking about the usefulness right now of the snapshot for school districts and the absence of sort of actionable training for superintendents or, you know. I think school boards have had some overview work, but I think it sounds potentially exciting for it to be actionable. I think it is interesting to hear the plan and intention of rollout so it will be used.
Yeah, so the first thing, the, the actual rollout of the Sback conversion data will be, starting to be made available with the May testing cycle of this spring, May 2020. But we see this as a tool, as is our literacy work, as part of Act 173 and our obligation to provide training and professional development and technical support to districts on how to implement 173. So we've been conceptualizing that work in four domains that are, as I introduced at a prior board meeting, based on current regulation, year rules, and those include coordination of curriculum, needs-based professional development, local assessment plan, and educational support teams. I mentioned those four existing regulations that we want to put increased effort on, and those are going to be sort of the framing points of our rollout, if you will, to districts on how to implement 173 successfully. We'll certainly be putting new focus on those initiatives, because in many ways, they've been in existence for over twenty years. But we'll be looking at those four elements in the context of the post-Akt 46 landscape. So in many cases, previously, those four things were considered on a school-by-school basis. What we're going to be doing is putting increased effort on looking them as a school district systems basis. So we're going to ask district to contemplate EST, for example, Educational Support Teams, as a district-level activity. And we see a special, the need to put special emphasis on literacy in particular as part of that coordinated curriculum strand. And we'll be formulating, you know, specific efforts and also seeking alignment with inside the, you know, other agency-led initiatives, such as when districts apply for their consolidated federal grant funding and so forth. So we'll bring those things into alignment with our other work. But you'll start to see that coherence-making happen more forcefully after January. When we complete our last framing documents, we've been working on these sort of four documents to outline that. I think today, the local assessment plan document will be coming out, and then we'll have a paper on coordinated curriculum, and then the last one on needs-based professional development, probably now the beginning of February. And from that point, we'll be turning a corner and planning specific professional development and technical guidance with districts.
Thank you. Yes, Bill?
I have a couple of questions. The first, I realize the waiting study is not your purview in a sense, but do you have an update on where that is?
Yeah, I don't know. It's been delayed. We are sort of the contractor on it, so it gets delivered to us first and then disseminated. There's been some delay from the researchers on doing the modeling behind the data. I think that's been the holdup. So we're expecting it any day now. I think it'll take us two days to do an accessibility check internally on the, on the document when it's produced, so hopefully we'll have it out soon. That's the best I can say at this point. But there's a lot of interest in, in it.
Well, obviously, the sooner the better, particularly when we're rolling into a legislative session.
Yes.
I wanted to also ask about this metometrics. And this, of course, is not a mandate, or at least I'm certainly hoping it's not.
It's not.
But I'm very much concerned that we set up new expectations, ask for more curriculum work, and we keep jamming up the system. And I'm just wondering if people have thought this out, and the second part of this is, can you tell me anything about the psychometrics of the balancing that's happening there? That's a really tricky business at that age.
Yeah. Well, the psychometric piece, I think we feel pretty confident in it. The Metometrics Company participated with Sback when they piloted Sback in terms of inserting their validated questions into the Sback pilot itself. So they were able to insert their questions into the Sback questions and get a pretty strong indicator of reliability and validity between the Sback and Lexile measure. So we feel pretty comfortable there. In terms of, you know, in terms of the coherence piece around curriculum, I think it's a good point. One of the reasons, as we were contemplating the complexity of Act 173 and how to make coherence for that on behalf of the field, we felt pretty strongly that it shouldn't be another add-on, per se, that there had to be a way to work with the existing regulations. And that's why we came back to those four that are, have been in this education quality standards, or at least been, I would say, well, well-adopted policy approaches in Vermont going back at least twenty years. And the fundamental concept of having a curriculum shouldn't be new to districts. And in some ways, I think, you know, Peter remembers with Act 153, one of the things that was introduced in 2010, when, in Act 153, was that the curriculum, the responsibility for curriculum coordination was shifted from schools to school districts or supervisory union level. And I don't know to what extent we've really actually followed up on that. But I think what we want to do is certainly bring that coherence by not introducing something new for districts, but also to work within the Act 153 and Act 46 concept that curriculum should be coordinated from a central level. And so far, you know, I've met with curriculum directors, superintendents, principals. I think there's a lot of agreement that this is a place where we can, we can get some coherence and make a difference. I think, you know, meeting with curriculum directors this year, it wasn't surprising to realize that their jobs are hugely different across the state. You know, there's no sort of central concept of what it is to be a curriculum director and what their responsibilities might include. So I think we have, it's a, it's a place we can go that's not necessarily a new initiative, but it's also a place, I think, where we can make an impact. It's, it's really hard, I think, to contemplate how we remediate and support students from falling behind when we don't know what they're falling behind from. You know, if we don't have a well-articulated curriculum, it's hard to do that. And one of the promises of Act 46 is now with, if, if the centralized board has that responsibility for curriculum, then they need to ensure that all the elementary schools in the districts are feeding into the common high school, all those elementary students are prepared. And, and we spend a lot of time in Vermont reinventing the wheel, as you know, and to insist that every teacher be a curriculum developer is, is a, is a big burden to shoulder and is, I think, a fundamental weakness in our system. So I think the more we can convince districts to work together on that and to promulgate curriculum that's aligned both vertically and horizontally, I think we'll start to see some improved outcomes for students. And it also helps us efficiently focus our remediation resources like special education, educational support teams and so forth, so.
Do you have some evidence of validity and reliability that you could share?
Absolutely. Yep. Happy to do that.
I keep thinking that if we start going this way.
Yeah, it's, it's, I think, you know, part of it, particularly as we focus on literacy, it's important for us to introduce a strategy on a data perspective that's sort of defendable, more so than some of the, I would say, the local, not in a bad way, local, but we have a lot of questionable benchmarking analysis going on at the local level that starts to break down, the validity starts to break down when they start to apply those inferences across the system. So to introduce, for instance, it's okay for a teacher to do some leveling work on literacy inside their classroom, but if they start making assumptions about how to assign students to special education, for instance, based on those sort of benchmark assessments that they've done themselves, that, that's where the inference really has to be strongly more tied to some more valid data. And part of the strategies we get into literacy is sort of to defuse some of the literacy wars that have gone on. We have a lot of strongly-held philosophy in literacy among our teaching corps, which is wonderful. But we have to introduce, I think, a more solid and reliable data measure that helps us sort of get to the point where we focus on outcomes and not, not get caught up in a debate over what's the best way to teach reading, but just insist that we can, we can hold up a good measure in the case of Lexiles and say, you know, it's not the best measure, it's not the only measure, but it's a pretty good reliable measure, and it's used broadly across the country. So let's make sure we're getting outcomes and sort of diffuse the conversation on philosophy a little bit.
So, Mr. Director, I think I heard you say something that I've heard others say before. Every teacher is a curriculum developer. Is that more or less so in your view?
You know, these are just anecdotal observations. I think, you know, we have, we have a wonderful tradition in our state where teachers are artisans in Vermont, you know, and they work to a certain extent in isolation. I, you know, I can share as anecdotally, that's my observation as a superintendent. When I go out as secretary, particularly in the fall, and I talk to new teachers when I encounter them, I ask them, you know, to what extent did you have curriculum when you arrived in your job? And very rarely will they say they were handed curriculum when they've arrived on their positions. So we expect new teachers to create curriculum, you know? And that's, that's the norm, I think, more often than not.
Is that the norm in most states?
I don't think so, and that's not necessarily a good thing either. You know, we have very top-down models in some, some states where they said, here are the textbooks, for instance. So I think there's a happy medium there, and the way, once again, is not to get at it from an anecdotal perspective, but to say, regardless of how we do it, let's focus on what the outcomes are. You know, if you can get outcomes that are based on sort of that artisanal model, why wouldn't we do it? But if the outcomes aren't good, and, you know, what we're seeing in Sback, the trend in Sback and confirmation through NAEP would indicate that we're not getting the best outcomes, and I'm not satisfied with the outcomes that we're getting. And if we come to probably one of the more valuable commodities in schools, which is how we use time, if we're spending time, a lot of time on curriculum development as opposed to actually teaching, then we, we have an issue.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you. Very interesting.
I will be curious, moving forward, what the agency, the decision-making around K2 assessment and what that looks like in terms of literacy.
Yeah, we're going to promote the conversation on the data piece. But then I think as we start to convene conversations around that, it'll be really interesting. But the decision on Lexile quantiles was partially made on the fact that most districts, I don't say almost, many districts already have those measures in hand. A lot of districts use benchmark assessment products, maybe not systemically, but they have them in-house already. So part of it, once again, was to, to just sort of highlight something many districts are already doing. But it will open the question as to, should there, is there a role for a statewide benchmark assessment?
And which one would it be?
And which one would it be?
And how would it be implemented in fidelity?
In the, in the policy pros is that we're working with legislative leaders on. One of the concepts I've advanced is that I don't really want to pick a specific assessment. What I'd like to see is the data, as long as they could report Lexiles and quantiles, I'm fine with it, and most of them do. So, yeah.
Good. It's been a good conversation. Thank you all, each of you. Let's now make time to hear from the public. I think, Jay, you had a burning share back there. Would you like to come to the table and?
I have a chair. I just wanted to ask, while you've been trying to speak into the mic, it's really easy to hear you, John. It's hard to hear other people, especially in a band or.
Back, Stu, yes.
They really use the mic a lot.
Yeah, and in fact.
They don't broadcast the sound, though.
They don't. They're just for the system. And in fact, in fact, if it would be helpful, possibly, at the break, you two might relocate over this way so that voices are carried to where they need to be heard. So are there any members of the public who wish to be heard at this time? I'm an older cross coach, so I project. Hearing none, anybody's welcome to speak. Hearing none, then we will break, and we'll get back in about ten to fifteen minutes. Thank you.
Let's resume. Megan and Marilyn, you want to come forward? Just a reminder to all, including the witnesses, the acoustics can hear pretty hard, so please speak up and project so that our guests, as well as the board, can hear. The same is true for board members. Please. So please introduce yourselves.
I'm Megan Roy. I am the, here as the chair of the Act 173 Advisory, Census-Based Funding Advisory Group. You have a long name.
We do. Good morning. I'm Marilyn Mahusky. I am also a member, the vice chair of the Census-Based Funding Advisory Group, and I am a staff attorney with Vermont Legal Aid's Disability Law Project.
Board members, you should have at least two documents at your immediate disposal for this conversation. One is an eighteen December piece by Megan Roy on your right up here, and the other is a sort of so-called mock-up of the regulation. So everybody should have that. I think that's the only documentation you present, correct?
Yep, it is.
Please proceed.
Sure. And just as folks know, there are a couple other members of the advisory group here, so they might chime in to kind of summarize our conversation. And I, we thought what we would do today is, is kind of talk a little bit about what happened between the last time we were here at the state board meeting and today. And you, so state board had asked us to come back with our reaction to the most recent draft of the agency rules specific to the special ed funding portion, so the thirteen-hundred series, and to propose alternative language, if we had that. You'll also remember that after the last state board meeting that we were here, that would be October, right? There was a working meeting that happened with a couple members of the state board, some folks from the AOE team, members of our groups, members of the advisory group, and representatives from the Federal Education Group, which is, who were. and representatives from the federal education group, which is, who were the authors of the report that you all heard in July. So that, that conversation was really productive and really useful, and I think resulted in that and, and other conversations resulted in a revised draft that the agency presented to the advisory group in November, at our November meeting. And at that meeting, the advisory group, you know, was really appreciative of the agency of ed because their, that revised draft signaled some shifts in two of the main concerns that we had shared with the state board of ed, and one of them was the definition of special education. And the other was kind of the, the original draft of the agency had lumped together three different funding mechanisms, federal funding, or how districts can use federal funding, how districts can use state funding, and what districts had to do to document maintenance of effort. Yep.
Excuse me, I'm for interrupting. I'd like to just thank you for getting us up to that.
Sure.
I want the board to be very clear about the context that we are in and the point in time we are in. This is kind of like a train trip across the country with stops in every major city and a few minor towns, and this is one of those stops. This is one of the ways along the journey. But this is a journey going someplace, and the end is in sometime in 2020, when the rules are finally adopted. So I want the board to be very clear that we are at a specific stop along the way. And if you, if you don't have it, I encourage you to keep the timeline in front of you because it's kind of the itinerary of the trip. And the timeline for, the itinerary for this day, this stop along the way, and the purpose and goal of this meeting and this discussion with Megan and Marilyn is that on this day, the CBF advisory group and other stakeholders present Concerns with AOE Draft Rules Version 2, which is what Megan just referred to as the agency's revised draft, which was so much more responsive to the concerns of the, of the interest groups. Comments on draft version 2 with specific language for revisions, I might say further revisions for, and the AOE is to respond in this meeting. That is the goal. As a result of that conversation, S, the state board will provide guidance to the AOE for revisions, if any, to be incorporated into AOE Draft Rules Version 3. Okay? So we're visualizing that there could be some suggestions that the agency concurs with or that the board concurs with, and let's keep in mind that it is the board's decision about what it is that goes into these rules, because the board won't adopt the rules unless it meets, the rules meet the board's expectations. But of course, the board is not expert in these matters and is eager to have the knowledgeable people sort it out. At the next meeting, one month from now or less, we will ask the agency to present its rules draft V3, incorporating whatever changes, if any, come out of this discussion. And the board will review, modify as necessary, and will adopt as the board's rules. And that's a very official milestone point where then an eight-month process of rulemaking, official rulemaking begins. So we're getting very close to the point where the board adopts rules. And they, and you don't want to start an eight-month rulemaking process with the rules you don't like, because you'll just look real silly at the end of the process. So we're getting very close to our destination or our, our big, we're almost at Chicago. And right now, we're somewhere in Pennsylvania, and Chicago's next stop, and we, we'll be in the big time. Okay? So we got to really take this seriously, and we really got to, between the agency and the advocates, we got to find our way to a consensus that you can deliver to us in 30 days. Thank you.
Thank you for that sublimation. So, so our goal today is just to kind of explain the recommendations that we have. Our December meeting that was scheduled for its usual time was canceled due to weather, so that, that tripped up our schedule a little bit, because at our November meeting, we signaled, the group signaled general agreement with the revised draft from the agency, conceptual agreement, particularly in the areas of the definition and the, separating the funding streams. Didn't, it was the first time the group had seen it, so they didn't want, they did not take formal action and had agreed to take formal action in December. So the December meeting being canceled tripped us up a bit. We were able to convene with a quorum a week later, but I know Secretary French wasn't able to be there. I think you were, thought you were going to call in and wasn't, weren't able to. So what, we had members of the AOE on the call, which was really helpful. They had some clarifications, but we don't, we as an advisory group haven't heard the agency's reaction to the edits that we're giving you today. So just wanted to clarify that. So what you have in front of you is a revised draft that is largely the agency's revised draft with a couple of edits, and I'm just going to highlight the edits. And then, well, depends on how you want to organize this. Highlight the edits, and then we can have, answer questions, have a discussion. The advisory group also has a more general recommendation to the state board regarding the process moving forward and how to interact with our group. I don't know if you want me to hold that to the end? Okay. So we'll stick with the rules first. So in the draft that you have, and this is formal, this, this are formally adopted as recommended by the group, we have the following additions. So the definition of special education in this draft from the agency is now aligned with the federal definition, but what's in there is a truncated version, shortened.
Page we are on?
We are on two. Two, thank you.
Page two, bottom?
Yes. Yes. Yep. Which makes sense. It's because the federal definition of special education is quite long. So we understand the agency's desire to shorten it. Our rec, in this recommended version, it has a more specific reference to the federal rule so that it's clear. So that's a pretty minor recommendation. The second piece that is in two different places, and this is about guidance and the development of guidance. So one of the things that came up out of the working meeting we had with federal education group was an acknowledgement that some of the documentation that districts will be required is defined in guidance, not in rule. And so this recommendation by the advisory group is to, in rule, insert a requirement that stakeholder input be gathered when developing guidance.
Bottom page three.
Yep.
And page eight.
And, yeah, thank you. It's in two places, both places that address the need for guidance.
I have a quick question here.
Yep.
Does guidance have a legal meaning or a legal term associated with it?
I'm going to ask my attorney colleague about that.
No, statutes and rules have legal force on effect. Guidance does not have the same force and effect, however...
Do you have any suggestions?
Well, strong suggestions in that depending, if, for example, if some, if there were a dispute and it were to go to court, the court might well look at the agency guidance and defer to the agency guidance because the agency is considered the expert. So some, you know, so it's, it's important...
It has a considerable degree of authority.
It sure does.
It does.
It sure does, yeah, unless it's, you know, completely off-base, but yeah.
Yeah, it does. I mean, you, you, you have to have compelling reasons not to comply with the guidance. Would that be fair to say, Mr. Secretary?
Yeah, I think it's a very critical piece.
Yeah.
And so it seems that also on page eight, there's a section about guidance, is that correct?
Yes, it's...
So what you're saying is, what I hear you saying is, you want to have an arrangement for the interest groups, stakeholders, to be able to be, have, have a look at the guidance that would emerge and be able to comment. In the end, of course, the agency will have sole authority to write the guidance as it sees fit.
Correct. That's right.
But you wish to have an op, and the board will not be involved, but you wish to have an opportunity to be present at the discussion.
Right.
And that's on page eight in paragraph D and page three in paragraph D. Is that correct?
That's right. And the stakeholder groups outlined in there are the, the members of the advisory group, written that way because this advisory group does not stay on forever as an entity itself, but the individual stakeholders as part of the group are identified. The third bullet is a, is a recommendation that was in our original draft set of rules and not in the agency's most recent draft. And this is specific to the issue regarding student placement by an IEP or a 504 team in an independent therapeutic school. So that would be a school approved for special education purposes, serving students with an identified disability.
Just bottom of page seven?
Yes.
No.
No, sorry.
It's bottom of, it's in the middle of eight, just below, it's paragraphs...
Oh, okay.
Just below D.
Did we skip over the one at the bottom of page seven?
That's the one that's captured...
Maintenance of effort.
It's about...
Yeah, that's, that's the guidance one, right?
No, this is...
Oh, yes. So that's, yeah, my recommendations don't follow the page order. That's my last bullet.
Okay, we'll come back to it.
Yeah, sorry.
So we're at the middle, the second, the, the lower highlighted paragraph on page eight?
Yes. Thank you. I should have put page numbers in here. So this, our recommendation is that the state board retain our language from the original, from our draft, which is to say that costs associated with a placement of a student at a special education school be considered allowable, all costs associated.
So this is not new to the agency, but the agency had earlier chosen not to incorporate it. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you're saying, please do.
Yeah.
This extraordinary, are we either or, or what, what, how, how does this, how does this...
Well, it's a good ques, it is related to extraordinary costs. It came out of, so the agency, over the summer, had issued some memos that have since been, have since been retracted, so, so to be clear. But the memos asked that those schools separate general education and special education costs in their tuition, which caused, once those numbers were calculated, would cause the allowable portion of a special ed tuition to be very small in some cases. Those memos have since been retracted. The advisory group recognizes that and appreciates that. I think the desire, though, was to make sure that that was codified in rule.
Can you clarify in terms of the census-based funding model, how does this work relative to the extraordinary?
Yep.
You know what I'm going on that?
I do. So if, and someone can help me with this if they would like, if we, if, even in a census-based model, there's still an extraordinary cost reimbursement factor with a threshold of $60,000 that will be adjusted by cost of living, and you get a certain percent, you get 95% reimbursement for those costs above $60,000. This rule would ensure that the entire cost of tuition can count toward that threshold. So for example, if, if our district is sending a student to a special education school that costs $100,000 a year, we would be able to count 100,000 of those dollars towards that extraordinary cost, which the threshold is 60, so we would get reimbursement on the amount more than 60.
So that would not dilute the, the funding for...
Correct. It doesn't, it doesn't impact the census base, the amount that the district receives in block grant. It, it just ensures that all of the costs associated can be counted toward that threshold, which, as I said, the, the guidance or the clarification that was issued by the agency that called that into question has since been retracted. So the advisory group is appreciative of that. I think it's just a recognition that they would like it in rule to make sure that that, that we would be able to count that, that districts would be able to count that. So that's the third recommendation, and the fourth one goes back to page seven. Sorry about that. And this is just, it, it's just a small clarification about the location of special education services, so that when you're documenting maintenance of effort, it's, the advisory group felt that it would help clarify that services are provided in multiple settings and that those services should be able to be counted toward maintenance of effort regardless of where they're provided.
This is bottom of page seven?
Yep.
If I may again, this is significant, though, I mean, in terms of, of regular ed and being able to identify that as, as, you know, that they can be coexist as shared.
Correct. Correct. It's, it is significant because it's, you know, it's the, it continues to be the feeling of the advisory group that one of the core features or purposes of 173 is the flexibility to be able to use the resources.
For everybody.
Right. Right. So...
And I would just point out that the language that we added here is reflected in the federal stat, in the federal regulations. So we just, it's really, it is designed to clarify how it can be used, but it actually has a tie to federal authority.
That's current, something new in federal regulations?
No, it's, it's existing. It's existing. But the age, the, because of our, our prior definition of special education, there was concern that it was narrow, too narrow, is that some of those permissible costs, this, our, Vermont had decided were not something that could be considered allowable. So this opens that, which is consistent with the underlying goals of 173. At least that's the, you know, that's the group, the belief of the advisory group. I won't speak for the agency, but yeah.
Thank you.
So I'll pause here, and we, I know we haven't had a chance to hear from the agency about what they think about this. I don't know if there are other questions, and then when we're kind of finished the rule discussion part, we can talk about our last recommendation of the advisory group.
Exactly. Mr. Secretary?
Yes?
What are your thoughts about the proposals?
We haven't had a chance as a team to digreeve on them, and certainly we'll factor them into our next iteration of the rules.
I think, are these, are you hearing these for the first time?
I saw the draft that was sent to me electronically, but I haven't heard their commentary on it, as, as was acknowledged, I wasn't participating in that meeting.
But you did have people at the meeting?
Yes, we had staff. Yep.
Okay. I'm just concerned about this because he...
We'll still be in a position to provide the next draft as, as the board schedules demands, and that'll be in the January meeting.
Yes, but the next, the draft that we're asking for in January is a draft that the board has decided is the draft it wants.
Sure.
So without having benefit of your perspective on these proposals, the board either can go ahead and order you to do what, well, if you wish to have your draft accepted...
Yeah.
You can, the board can proceed and indicate to you that the only acceptable draft will include these, or we'd be happy to be guided by your views, but you not having views at this stage makes it very difficult to move forward.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it was in my, the way the agenda's formulated on this, it sounds like the stakeholder feedback is the agenda item. I didn't realize that there was an opportunity for the agency to...
It specifically says, "An agency responds."
I don't see that.
You'll see it in the timeline.
I know, but the agenda for today is, in open meeting, it says stakeholder feedback. The agency's not a stakeholder group. We're, we're, you know, the administrative body.
All right. Next time, I will put in the explicit language from the timeline, but you have the timeline, and I would think you would know that we expect the agency's response to these proposals at this meeting. I understand that the meeting with, their work was postponed, but I also know that some of your employees were there, and I'm just very disappointed that basically the agency has done nothing with these proposals since they've been made.
That's not a fair characterization. I didn't say we haven't done anything with it, but we're not prepared today to present them.
And when will you be prepared?
I was expecting to present them as part of our rules and, according to your timeline, in January.
Well, the, the board needs to make a decision between the agency's view and the advisory group's view, and, and that decision will then determine what will be in the rules.
Sure.
So by virtue of this delay, I think it pushes the entire conversation back a month.
I, I don't see it as a delay per se, but, you know, our schedule was to produce the next iteration in January based on this feedback, and there's, there's some good points in there. We want to have a chance to incorporate it into our next draft.
Board members, do you have any comments on the proposals that we've heard from the advisory group? Kim?
Just, most of them seem like clarifications or... Just, most of them seem like clarifications or references to the federal definition. So for me, and the few meetings I've been able to sit on, I don't see any of this to be problematic, and I see it to be a solid clarification of what I think is both in federal regulation as, in addition to being aligned with the intent of Act 173 to allow flexibility to deliver the services. I know the memos that came out earlier and then were later retracted, I can understand the value in codifying the notion that if we are outplacing, just, and my school board member had, if we are, if our district is needing to outplace a student for that level of intensive special education needs, and that is the best free and appropriate education that can be offered, I can't begin to imagine that there's any version of that being offered under the regular ed category. And so in its original distribution, that memo was just alarming in a few hats, and in its retraction, that's great, but I can understand why it would make sense to codify that. So where that, I bet is maybe one of the bigger stumbling blocks. If there is to be any around these, I see very good reason for it to be there, in my opinion.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Peter?
What?
Looking for board comment.
On what?
On the agency, the advisory group's four recommendations. Yes, Mr. Secretary?
To Kim's point, we, you know, as the law requires, we anticipate taking on the independent school aspect of which the therapeutic schools are part of as a separate body of work, and we've advertised that. So that's, that's really the reason we haven't addressed that issue, and our June memos are really a response to trying to implement our old regulations, which we've acknowledged are imperfect, and basically made the decision, we'd prefer to resolve these issues through the opportunity of Act 173 rulemaking, but the question of whether independent school language belongs in this section or not is an open question. We would, we haven't begun to really do that work, which will require an examination of the regular independent school rules as much as the special ed independent schools.
I think, I think we'd like to have that discussion subsequent to this. I'm simply trying to get clarity about the four specific recommendations that we have heard from the advisory group. John, do you have thoughts about this?
I think the third bullet speaks to what Dan just said, and I don't know how can it go, and maybe they're two different, the stuff, one is a blanket statement, the other is kind of like the details of what they spend, what costs look like in independent schools for services.
Right, and I would add, it's the advisory group's perspective that the reason why this portion is relevant to the special ed funding rules is because it specifically speaks to a unique situation of independent schools, which is students who are eligible for special education and placed solely at a school for a specific purpose. So that's, so from the perspective of the advisory group, yes, we agree that there's much work to be done as defined by 173 on independent school rules. This piece feels correctly situated in the special ed funding rule because it's specific to special ed funding for kids at these placements.
So I'm not clear, is that piece incorporated among the four that you presented here?
Yes, that's the third bullet. And I was just responding to, you know, which is a good question, whether, since, if we know we have to address independent school rules, should they be referenced here? Our perspective is this narrow slice of independent rules makes sense in this section. That's just the perspective of the group.
Yeah, I would just say that, you remember our working group, this was not an item on a working group sort of task, that's the reason we haven't addressed it, I would just...
Kim?
I think in that that section very specifically says placement eligible special ed students in an approved independent school that limits enrollment to students who are on an IEP or plan under 504 really narrowly defines the situation we're speaking of, and I think its utility for those not intimately involved would be very helpful, so that frankly, board members can understand, in understanding our special ed costs, what, how that works in the context of 173 and census-based funding. So I see that to be valuable as, you know, on the receiving end of it, in that placement with that very specific narrow application.
So our agenda says...
Last bullet, and maybe this doesn't fit here somewhere outside or nowhere, but I'm just wondering, besides the location, should there be, or is there other language around who is providing these supports? Is that important to this bullet, not just where?
It's a good question. I'll give an example that I think is connected to your question, that the advisory group has talked a lot, which is making sure that an IEP team, for example, can choose a provider that the IEP team believes is the right provider. You know, current interpretation limits that to special ed licensure. We didn't, we didn't make an attempt to kind of also lump that into this line, mostly because we think with the shifted definition of special ed, that is now in alignment with the federal definition that it allows that. Kind of to your point, Kim, that, the approach of just being consistent with the federal definition is the approach the advisory group has tried to take. So we're not looking to change that, we're looking to be consistent, so...
It's just a change of practice, you're saying, no, anybody can provide a special ed services within a school.
Right, yes, right. So we didn't choose to repeat it there, mostly because we think the definition accounts for that, but, but that is what we're trying to achieve, to make sure that that can happen.
So, board, the, our agenda calls for a discussion and then vote. The question to vote on is, what is the view, the board's view of the four recommendations that have been presented to us? A possible motion would be that the board endorses, I'm hearing this agreement and consent to these proposals from the board. A possible motion would be that the board endorses the four specific proposals that we've heard today, and urges the agency to incorporate them in its final draft. Would you be comfortable with a motion like that, and if so, please make it?
I don't think I would be. I'd like to hear from both, both groups, the agency and the advisory committee, that we all endorse these without reservation, and we go forward together. This changing rule as we go through the process is a dangerous business.
We're, how are we changing a rule? We're trying to get to an agreed rule.
Yes, that's what I'm saying is...
I guess what I'm trying to get at is that these folks have done their part to present a proposal. The agency, for whatever reason, has not, is not prepared to respond. They will presumably respond in the coming 30 days. It seems to me that it's useful to say, as far as the board is concerned, these proposals make sense, and we urge the agency to incorporate them. The agency will decide to or not, as it sees fit, between now and the next time we see them.
May I ask, Dave, what's our realistic response time for you? We've got the holidays coming up and whatnot.
Yeah, we're on schedule to produce the next draft based on this feedback.
Is there any chance of you getting that back to us before the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, we certainly can do that. I don't know what this board would do. Are you suggesting you would schedule a special meeting?
I'm just suggesting it'd be nice to be able to digest it before, and perhaps we can communicate in advance.
What if we took a motion that was contingent upon their approval?
Is that a big part?
If we took a motion that was contention upon them saying yes, then it would just fall into place, assuming that the agency said yes.
Assuming that that isn't going to happen, then what?
The action would be to approve it to the next step, would it not?
Kim?
I think I just, I would love to clarify, if there's, Bill, you have specific concerns that would be ours in our perspective, look before bullets, because I think what I'm understanding, John, is that you're asking for, in our understanding of the most recent draft and these most recent changes, do we see anything alarming that would cause us to think these should not be included? And that we are providing basically guidance to the agency on our comfort with these four bullets for their consideration when they draft the next round. And I think, is that what you were asking us to vote on, John?
I think if, yes, I think if the board says it sees these recommendations as appropriate to be incorporated in the next draft, the agency is free to do so or to come back with us with compelling reasons why not to do so. And at that point, the board could say, well, we're compelled, we'll make the adjustments as you suggest, but absent compelling reasons to do so, the board would expect these changes to be incorporated. That's the direction we're trying to move in. We're just very eager to get this wrapped up so we can get on with the rulemaking process, which takes a minimum of eight months, and we, there's a, there's a fuse here, legislative mandate to complete the rulemaking process. We're ahead of schedule, and I don't want to fall behind. So by endorsing these, we're saying, unless the agency come backs, comes back to us in 30 days with compelling reasons not to consent to these proposals, these should show up in the final draft, P3.
And you can tell me if it's not fair to ask, but you're sitting here, so I'm going to ask you. In the conversation that did include staff, were there particular things that you heard that would cause concern for why these would not be acceptable in the next round?
It's a good question. We specifically asked Emily and Judy, you know, do you guys want to talk? And they were clear that Dan wasn't able to make it. That was sort of, I got the impression that that was unexpected. Right. Right. So they were really explicit in saying that they're not prepared to give a reaction to it at that meeting. I think the things that the two of you commented on were more, it was related to kind of the rationale for shortening the federal definition of special ed. I think Judy, so it was technical clarification, yep.
Great, thank you. I didn't mean to put anybody on this, but I just, I know that you guys had to shuffle through in the snow day.
Right.
Come with your response, and I know with that probably the benefit of full discussion at your table, so I was, you for insight.
Yep.
Thank you.
So is there a motion?
I will make a motion to endorse and merge with the board's recommendations.
So I think the motion is to endorse the recommendations of the advisory group and to urge the agency to incorporate them in draft P3, which draft will be presented and voted on at the next meeting and, of course, furnished to us in advance. Is that what you had in mind?
That is, I will second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. You have endorsed these recommendations of the advisory group and passed it on to the wisdom of the agency, and we will, by the way, this discussion will happen on the 15 January meeting, which will be in Rutland, and it, we will get board business done from 12:30 to 2 o'clock in the afternoon, and then, so we'll get this done then, hopefully, and then the board will then begin its hearing or inquiry on another subject and be there the rest of the day and into the evening. So now...
Yes.
So the next, is the next steps and the process and the interlinks between them? Is that what you'd like to speak to?
Yep, so, and it sort of picks up a couple threads that we've talked about in terms of process. So the advisory group, you know, one of its, one of our three core purposes is to advise the state board on rulemaking, and we very much appreciate the thought, thoughtful way of getting this group's input to the state board. The way that's played out has, you know, and again, appreciate the ability to be able to recommend alternative language, but what it has required is a significant amount of work to produce revised drafts in response to agency drafts. This is a group that, at least from a funding standpoint, the legislation has funding for it for eight meetings a year. We'll discuss this at our January meeting, but we will have had six by January, so we will have to decide as a group, do we meet more than that, and anyway. But the point is, because of this, the way, you know, we, so the agency will bring a draft, there will be some discussion, then a month goes by, our group will then share its reaction, recommend changes. To Dan's point, usually the agency isn't prepared at that moment to react to our reactions, and then another month goes by, and the state board, which we appreciate, asked us specifically, in this case, for alternative language, which we were able to do, but it's the feeling of the advisory group that that became our single focus. And we have two other very important statutory requirements, which is to advise the agency on implementation, which is related to professional development and how are schools actually going to implement this, and also to inform the general assembly on any possible changes. And we have not had a lot of airtime, quite frankly, to dedicate to that. So this recommendation acknowledges that there are a number of additional things related to rules. So there's the independent school rule development, which has a slightly different timeline, at least in the original legislation, so we understand that there was a reason to rush for this portion, but that will, we anticipate, be a big discussion. There's also a discussion that our group has not been able to dive into, which is, are there other elements of the 2360 series, which is the special education rule series, that might need to be updated? Prelimarily, the group has discussed whether or not there needs to be rules around implementation of a multi-tiered system of support, since that's in Act 173. I don't know whether or not the advisory group, where the group would land on that, we haven't had the opportunity to discuss it in depth. So all of that points to, it's challenging for us when we are also tasked with drafting alternative language, and so we would encourage the state board to, to get to the support that they need to be able to have alternative drafts, because it's starting to feel a little bit beyond the scope of the advisory group to come up with draft language. We really believe that our role is to react to language, certainly understand why the board would say, well, don't just tell us what you don't like, tell us how you would resolve that, that makes a lot of sense, but I'm just not sure, and I would also say that it, we have relied heavily on Marilyn's expertise and her team to be able to draft these rules, and that's been a challenge. So that's probably written more succinctly in this paragraph, but our recommendation just overall is that if the state board is looking for alternative language, that they have some support in drafting that, because I'm not sure how long the advisory group can continue doing that part. Does that capture?
Yeah, I think that's good.
Dan, can you get us up to, help me anyway, remember, what, what's the, what's the drop dead date currently, under current statute as revised, for the independent school rules?
I want to say 2023. No?
There's, I don't remember if that's the school name, but the statute that would be in our current rule doesn't connect to line 2222 currently. So I would have to recommend that you can finish the rule for 22, 23 school year.
So the deadline for the rule is, again...
I don't have a deadline for the rule, I would say about...
Oh, pardon me.
Yeah, I think that's the challenge of the question. We have a static deadline on this piece of it, and then we have this expectation that we would engage in, in, you know, examining the implications for independent schools as a result of 173. I don't think that translates that to a deadline.
Have you put together a timeline for implementation or completion, if you will, of the revision of independent school rules?
Completion, that was an exciting concept. We have, you know, on our website, we have, under the About section, our policy work plan, we schedule out these different elements. under the about section, our policy work plan, we schedule out these different elements. Our expectation is to, right now, if, if the board formally adopts rules and moves forward with the financial rules, then we're going to spend our energies on the independent school process and project immediately. So that's our, we see that as our next piece of work. But we do want to see if we can get consensus with the advisory group on making recommendations to the legislature on any modifications to the law, so that we don't, like last year, we, we had a bit of a debate on the delay question or not. We had, the agency had promulgated some modifications to the law that were incorporated in the technical corrections bill that was never passed into law. So we have pieces of 173 that need to be harmonized, anyway, leftover from last year. But we want to work with the advisory group to see if there's any other adjustments that might be necessary based on the work we've done to date, which has been very productive in the last eight months, more so than previously, I would argue. We also have the issues Dr. Mathis alluded to, the waiting study. So there's, there's an issue around the waiting study and the formulation of the block grant that probably should be examined from the construct, the modification of the law. Long winded answer, our next project would be the independent school piece. But what I think was not anticipated in the law was that there's a direct relationship between the independent school special ed rules and the independent school general ed rules. And part of our initial sort of look at it indicated that we need to dig into the general rules as well, the 2200 series.
So the final section, which we do, are the first one tonight, the state board shall review a rule for other independent schools, specific special education categories, and initiate rulemaking. So
So you can initiate.
This is one of the provisions that, among all the other provisions except the one, were not closely examined. The general assembly decided to change the first year for block grant. So it's, I don't know whether they're going to add the later one to that question.
And was, was that modified at all in the big bill? Or is this the original language?
No, that's what we're saying. We have pieces that we would now go back to them and say, look, here's, here's where we are, here's the current update. Therefore, we recommend that you should move this milestone back. None of that has been looked at, so.
Allowing for an eight-month rulemaking process under the Title III, which is pretty typically what that rulemaking process takes, that gets you a, an actionable product around August of 2021. Is that what, to initiate rulemaking, I think means to begin the, the administrative rules process, Administrative Procedures Act. And the APA process, as a rule, can take no less than eight months.
It can take no more than eight months.
No more, pardon me, that's right. That's right. No more.
Where you need permission to continue.
But it's very difficult to do it much less than two, six months.
Eight months is longer than state government as a rule of plan.
Right. Right.
Can I ask, when you said it's aimed at, by whom?
How you, you charted in your own rules, its rules, state board's rules for approving independent schools in specific special education categories and initiate rulemaking to update its rules to simplify and simplify the process.
Right.
SBE.
So it's rule 2200, and?
We think there's implications for the general ed rules as well as the special ed rules.
Yeah, understood.
We'll, we'll, assuming this launch goes forward, we, we will be able to schedule that or make a recommendation to you and.
So back, I think in May, your team gave us a sort of provisionary timeline, remember that? It was a very helpful start. And it was from that that I developed a timeline that the board is using. The board will need to develop its own timeline again. But we'd certainly like to start with what you folks visualize. So the sooner, maybe you can give me an idea sometime soon as to when, you can at least give us a draft of a timeline, not committing yourselves to things, but just what's reasonable to expect. And then we'll translate it into something like the timeline we're all working from now. So understand that we're going to be on two separate timelines, and they will probably overlap.
Yeah. And it very well, some of that could manifest itself in a consensus recommendation from the advisory group, us, perhaps the state board, on a modification to the law that would push that November 2020 date back.
Resources being
Because it hasn't been considered based on the trajectory of the current
So I think that the sooner you're able to get that, and we're able to put it together ourselves, then we have the evidence that we might employ in speaking to the general assembly about these deadlines. Kim?
And just thinking about, and I, and I apologize if I got this wrong, but so if we were to begin by November of this coming year, we would be done in August of 2021?
Latest, yes.
Ish. And, and then this will be implemented in 2022? Did I get that right? July 1, 2022?
Well, I think 2022 is no later than.
So implemented. So I am, my interest in making the point, if we were to push it out, is related to budgeting and planning
Right.
At the local level.
So we have
You really can't push that too much further than that. I don't see anybody benefits from that.
That's where we, I'd say harmonize, we have to sort of understand the trajectory of when the block grant goes live.
Right.
Because part of it is to, we have to implement a financial schedule that gets people to that place, which has implications backing up a level from there, is that whether we tell districts they have to do the old methodology in the fall of service plans or not. So there's a discrete timeline that we have to factor into our recommendation to you.
And I think being very sensitive to that should be otherwise pushed out, because I think that districts begin their budgeting
Right.
Anytime after the first of the fiscal year. So, and are in earnest
So
in these conversations by November.
Would you translate that for me into a date of implementation?
I think the, the point would be that, you know, there's a practical element to the budget cycle
Right, right, right.
That has to be factored in
Right.
To the implementation of the rules. So it isn't conceivable, for instance, to suddenly turn on the rules in August and tell districts to live under them without having adequate time to budget appropriately.
So it is a date that would be workable for the districts?
Well, that's what we will factor into our recommendation to you. We, you know, I think that, I'm sensitive a bit to the general assembly's perception that there's been a series of delay, delay, delay.
Yeah, yeah.
Part of that, I don't think should be surprising to anyone due to the complexity of the law and the fact they put on the table multiple competing initiatives.
Right.
But I think, I feel more comfortable that we have a broader understanding of the scope of the work and can reduce it to some real deliverable timelines at this point. But it does require an assessment of when, when it's practical for the districts to actually implement their budgetary cycle under the new regulation. So we'll factor that into our, sort of, your initial request, like give us your best guess on that. We will, we will have that built into our contemplation as we do that.
Again?
Well, just to add to that, the advisory group is required in January to issue their report to the general assembly. So we will, at our January 6 meeting, we will both be hearing the waiting study for the first time.
Hopefully.
Hopefully. That's, yes, exactly. And then having a significant discussion on recommendation to the general assembly. The agency can certainly make recommendations later in the session, but our group has to do it in January. That's what it's defined. So some of these issues we will be speaking to, and hopefully, hopefully have enough information to actually make strong recommendations to the general assembly, as opposed to, you know, our first report last January was really sort of, here are issues we think are going to come up, and we haven't had time to discuss them. We're hoping to be able to be a little bit more detailed. But that's our timeline, just so you know.
So mindful of Kim and Dan's thoughts about getting this completed in time for it to be actionable by the districts, it does sound like, oh, and also mindful that the legislature's getting grumpy about delays and pushing things off, it could very well be that we're sort of stacking up an awful lot of work to be conducted simultaneously. That seems to me to become essentially a resource problem. And there's always that saying that if, if you have a problem that can be fixed with money, you don't have a problem. So I think very possibly what's going to need to happen is that we need to say to the legislature, if you want it by this, this, this year, this date, you'll need to resource us. Otherwise, it'll stretch out a year, and we'll limp along with the limited resources we have.
Mm-hmm.
It'll be their choice.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I think we're done with this section of the testimony.
Great.
From the advisory group. However, Marilyn is here wearing a second hat, which you are welcome now to explain.
I'll scoot over chairs, so it's obvious I'm putting on a different hat. So now I am wearing my advocacy hat as attorney with Vermont Legal Aid's Disability Law Project. And previously, we had shared with you proposed rule changes for the 2360 series. So these were shared, I believe, with the board earlier this fall. I believe
October 16th, you left them with us.
Okay, thank you. So I believe they've been shared with the Census Base Funding Advisory Group as well, but we have not discussed them. So I just want to make that really clear. The Disability Law Project revised the rules that you have in front of you based on, it's not our work alone, it also incorporates other community partners. So we, we worked with the Vermont Family Network, we worked with some private attorneys who represent parents in special education proceedings, we worked with folks from the Autism Task Force. So there was a, you know, a broader coalition of people who were looking at the rules. So these rules are much broader than, are our proposed changes are really much broader and incorporate all of the changes we'd like to see in the 2360 series. I'm mindful, though, that there's value in this group and perhaps the advisory group trying to narrow the, the proposed rule changes, the 2360 proposed changes, that tie directly to Act 173. So, you know, John and I have had some conversations about that. I, the Disability Law Project has had some conversations with the rulemaking group of the Vermont Council of Special Education Administrators with Megan's group. We have another meeting scheduled. We've not reached any consensus yet. So what you have really is the viewpoint of the advocacy community, and this has not had an opportunity to work its way through and hopefully gather some more collaboration. But I did want to point out, at John's request, that there are some rules that we feel pretty strongly are definitely tied to Act 173 that should be, should be incorporated as changes. One, of course, is the definition of special education, which the agency has already indicated that it's intending to change in the 2360 series. And as we discussed earlier, the, in the rural 1300 series, that the agency has adopted that, and a truncated version of that rule in the 1300 series, and references that the full federal definition will be included in the 2360 series. I think I'm correct in that. Right, Dan? The 23, the rule, definition of special education will be incorporated in its entirety.
We certainly want to have it consistent, but we haven't spent a lot of time on 2360.
Okay. So, so what you have, the other rules that I think, so some of these rules are things like the WEOWA, which is the Work Investment Opportunity Act. Thank, it's not my area of expertise. But anyway, under federal law, there is a requirement that the, that transition age services begin at age 14. Currently, our rule is 16. Arguably, that's not related to Act 173. But those are the kinds of changes that are in here. Some other changes that we have, we'd like to see are some parental notification. Again, those are not necessarily related to 173. The rules that I think really are relevant to 173 is the, is the adverse effect rule. And let me see if I can find that, what page that's on. I'm sorry I didn't mark it. I don't think I've passed over it. It has to do, it's 23, it's on the bottom of page six. So currently, under Vermont law, in order for a child to qualify for special education, they need to have a disability as defined by the statute, the federal statute and Vermont law, which is comparable. There, there are essentially three gates. One is that you need to have a qualifying disability. The second is that, that, that disability needs to have an adverse effect on the child's educational performance. And the third gate, then, is that there's a determination by the IEP team or the evaluation planning team that the child needs specialized instruction. That differs from the federal law. So under federal law, there are only two gates. One is that the child has a qualifying disability, and as a result of that, needs specialized instruction. Vermont years ago put in this adverse effect, which I can't tell you the entire history, some of my colleagues can better, but it's been around for a long time. And the adverse effect means that an IEP team needs to look at how the child's performance is adversely affected, you know, is adversely affected. Exactly. And so we have found in our practice that, one, there's inconsistency among districts in terms of how that's applied. So two children could have, you know, have similar characteristics, similar educational performance, and different IEP teams, different school districts would interpret that differently. So there's a huge variability. The Disability Law Project is a statewide organization, so we see and represent children from all over the state. Some districts do it really well when, and some districts arguably do it less well.
Which better guidance?
No, I don't think the guidance would be sufficient. I really think that there are groups of kids that are impacted by this adverse effect rule. The kids who are primarily affected are children who have an autism spectrum disorder but are higher functioning children, and then also children with an emotional disturbance. So what we have proposed language that we think that addresses that, one, we'd like to see the rule eliminated. The other, but we have proposed specific language that ties, at the bottom of page seven, under basic skill areas, if we're going to look at adverse effect, we, you tie it to functional skills, which is also a federal requirement, which we don't currently look at functional skills. So sometimes you have children who academically are doing relatively well, but their other, like, functional skills are below average, and that's a result of their disabilities. And then also, we've added the basic skill area of transferable skills. And what, and that is tied to the State Board of Education adopted standards. So I want to just say that we think, we feel pretty strongly that this is a rule that we'd like to see eliminated. It's a conversation that is ongoing with the Vermont Council of Special Education Administrators. We'd like to see if we could get some more collaboration. So I'm giving you highlights of rules that I think are related, that you may hear back from us on. But I'm really highlighting them, because we're hoping that maybe we can reach some sort of consensus about that particular, this particular recommendation. The other rule that I want to highlight is that currently under Act 73, the agency is directed to develop guidance relative to a multi-tiered system of supports. Our group feels that there does need to be a rule. Again, there is variability among school districts in their ability to deliver a multi-tiered, a meaningful, a best, a multi-tiered system of support with fidelity. Some school districts do that well, and some are really at very beginning stages of implementing multi-tiered systems of supports. So we feel it's important that there actually be a rule, and that's at the bottom of page 15, where we have drafted a rule. We wanted to keep it very short and clean, because we understand that the agency has developed some technical guidance on this, and there are some ideas as to what's best practice. And it's such a huge issue that it'd be hard to put it all in rule and have that rule mean anything. But basically, our concerns are, and I think this is related to the federal requirements under child fine, which is the obligation of the state to ensure that all children who have disabilities are identified and evaluated, is that under the, under the rule we're proposing, that there be some, the state, every school, the state needs to ensure that every school district has a policy for how it's going to identify students who are in need, in need of a multi-tiered system of supports, to establish benchmarks for performance for all students who need the multi-tiered systems of support. performance for all students who need the multi-tiered systems of support, create a mechanism and timeframe for monitoring student progress, informing parents about the multi-tiered system of support when their children are on it, how their children are progressing, when they're moving through it, conveying the results of that to parents, and then determining when a child has not made adequate progress and should be referred for an evaluation for special education.
So, are you proposing that the rule be supplemented by a, the existing rule be supplemented by a rule that says guidelines for each of those topics shall be developed? Or are you expecting to put the specifics in the rule?
No, we're not asking that those specifics be put in the rule.
But you're asking that the rule require the development of guidelines?
That's right. Not just guidance, but that each school district be required to develop a policy saying how it's going to do those things. That gives the agency an opportunity to be really clear with districts about looking at policy. Are you following your policy? Are you properly implementing this?
So, would the agent, agency furnish guidance to the schools as to what ought to be included in the policies they develop?
I think that's correct. And currently, they have developed guidance, but again, it's, you know, there's variability in how that's being-
Using it or not, is that what you're saying?
Right, I think that's right.
So, it's more a question of assuring compliance with the guidance or attention to the guidance that exists?
There is, there is current guidance, the agency had been developing that over the course of this past year. They did do some trainings. I believe it's only been, the official guidance has only been released recently. There is currently no rule on MTSS.
No rule that says that the schools must develop this policy?
That's right. And so, our recommendation is that there actually be a rule that school districts must do this. And that, I think, gives it more force, and it gives the agency greater opportunity for oversight when school districts are needing more assistance.
Okay. And next?
Those are the primary rules that I wanted to point out that I think are definitely tied to Act 173. We included a statement of purpose in here, which is the statement of purpose that was reflected in Act 1300 series. We think it's important that these rules be tied to that. Under page three, under personnel qualifications, we didn't actually propose language here, but we wanted to note that there could be, as part of this entire process, an opportunity to be looking at what are qualifications, and that would do more, deal more with licensing, which is really outside of our scope, but I think in conversations with the secretary, you know, in, in the Census-Based Funding Advisory Group, there have been some conversations, brief conversations, just sort of acknowledging that that's an area that we may need to be looking at, is what are qualifications, so that we have greater flexibility as to the staffing who can provide the supports.
May I ask, were these recommendations discussed, presented to you and discussed among the advisory group?
No, and I mentioned that at the outset. So, these are really the recommendations of the advocacy community. We have had some preliminary conversations with members of the advisory group, but there has not been a conversation about our recommendations as the group. So, you had asked me to just walk through what are, and highlight some of the issues that you will see from us again, so there's still sort of a work in progress.
I'm thinking about the train leaving the station.
Yep.
And it's picking up speed.
Yep.
And just, I guess, from a practical point of view, or even a political point of view, the board is, and the agency are obliged to pay attention to the advisory group. They have authority to advise us, and we have the obligation to pay attention to what they say. It's not true of any other group?
Correct.
So, if I wanted my agenda to be advanced, I would hitch my wagon to the advisory group.
Understand. That's what we're trying to do.
And if you, and if they don't take you on board, well, then you're sort of on your own. I guess that's where you're at.
To that point, I, that is why I sort of couched these in terms of, we are continuing to have conversations. I think what you will see, I don't, I don't know, again, the timing of things as such, that there, and there have been so many other issues that the advisory group has had to focus on, there, we have not even had to put on the agenda yet a discussion about the 2360 series. So, that's something that Megan and I can talk about in terms of how and when that group might do that. And the, and the outcome may be that the group doesn't feel as though this is, that any of these rules need to be changed. And then that, and then you will hear from us again during public, during the official rulemaking process in terms of public notice.
Yeah.
Public comment.
I would just observe that if you read the timeline, in February, I'm sorry, in March and April, there will be a public comment period.
Mm-hmm.
And after that, in May, the board makes its final, final adoption of the rule that it's going to put into rulemaking. And then, of course, during rulemaking, there's still more opportunity to make comment. But quite frankly, I think the board's interest in tinkering with its draft diminishes over time.
Mm-hmm.
Simply because when you publish a rule, you're telling the whole world, this is what we plan to do. And it gets very awkward to change what you plan to do so that at the end, you're promoting a rule that you had not told people you were going to promote.
Mm-hmm.
So, there is provision in law for that to happen, but it, the board's interest in further changes, once we officially adopt the rules, declines significantly.
Sure, sure.
Sort of saying, well, why didn't we hear about that six months ago?
Which is why you're hearing about it now.
We're hearing about it now. And I guess we might have wanted to hear about it more even before now. So, yeah, go ahead, Megan.
Well, just to, I prefer with a lot of Maryland's talking about related to the other conversations, that the individual on today is acting individually as part of the group, but it's happening, and it's still happening, and he's getting, hasn't been until, what the, and it's also true that the advisory group hasn't discussed the draft of the rest, but they have discussed, have briefly discussed, all of the other areas of the 2360 series that the advisory group has mentioned are necessary to be revised. They have had that discussion, and the results of that, primarily, and I can pull up, I know it's from that meeting, probably in the, in the, in the, in the, because I'm going to mix up exactly how many, but, there were a number of folks who said, you know, we have so many other elements on our plate, that we don't have, have a mandate question to be able to dive into those. There were a couple of organizations that said, we should talk about this, or these bodies, or others, but the group didn't reach consensus on, yes, we absolutely need to talk about this because it's connected to 173. So, I just wanted to throw, but we did have that discussion, which was, are there other areas of the rules that we should be talking about as an advisory group?
Well, as you both know, the board will want to focus only on rule changes that relate to the implementation of 173. This is not going to be a Christmas tree with everybody's favorite improvement that they've been thinking about for years. There's some other mechanism for doing that, but I think we really want to support the focus on 173 and its successful implementation. So, I guess, all I can say is, you're sort of playing catch-up, and I would encourage you to just give us material in writing with specific language.
Mm-hmm.
Just as soon as possible. In fairness to the agency, we can't ask them to take into account any of this in their preparation of their next draft, because they haven't, we haven't received it, and, well, sure, you gave it to us on the 16th of October, but-
I think the agency did present a draft primarily with technical changes.
Yeah, we haven't really touched the series. I mean, we'll be anxious to hear the conversation, particularly at the advisory group level, but certainly, you know, with the directors and so forth. And we're open to making changes that we think are necessary regardless of the charge, but certainly 173 is our primary focus. But if the advisory group were to advance this, we'd certainly, you know, put some energy on it.
Kim?
So, just for my clarification, the rules we've been looking at and that are in the process that we are looking for our final draft in January are 1300.
Yeah, and part of the debate originally was how to even approach the rulemaking under 173s, and one of the key decisions we made was to separate the financial rules out from the programmatic rules. So, and part of that, from a strategic standpoint, was if we do have to make further modification to the financial rules, it wouldn't precipitate the opening of the whole body of rules, which are rather large. So, that was, that was a strategic decision. So, we're focused right now, 1300, if you will, are the financial rules that we're promulgating under 173.
And the 2360 draft was that huge thing that we got earlier, right?
We call the program rules the larger, the special rules.
Okay. And backing into changes to that will be necessitated by, for instance, redefining special ed, correct, or aligning special ed with the federal definition? You couldn't have that be what's here and not in 2360. Am I getting at least that much right?
That's, I think Maryland's plan, I don't want to necessarily dispute that, but we haven't put any energy on that since we're, we're so focused on this 1300 series, we'd certainly go back and revisit the ramifications once 1300 sort of takes shape.
And so, it is conceivable we could have coexisting, if we don't take some action in a formal process regarding 2360 alongside these, we could have coexisting applications of definition of special ed that don't agree with one another.
Yeah, I think I'll defer, she thinks just-
Or all current funding rules.
Yeah, that's what I was going to-
Since 2360 can strike the current funding rule.
Right. Okay, so there will be an amendment of some sort that will reflect alignment of this. So, that is not, is that in our timeline, John? Like, do we reference 2360?
We have that, we have that in our radar, and that's to the point of the June memos, which were guidance on the current regulations, which we're basically saying we're not going to pay a lot of attention to our current regulations in favor of trying to enact some change to our new process, but we will, we will have to bring this all together for you in a way that strikes the relevant portions that are being applied in the new language under 1300.
So, will that all happen in January, or is that a separate timeline for a separate set of rules?
It's a separate timeline, separate time, set of rules, isn't it?
Emily's suggesting it's going to happen. So, minimally, the other opinions of advocacy positions, so, an MTSS rule, or things that may be more controversial, less linear, I'm going to call the idea of aligning the definition of special ed very linear, like, so I would imagine minimally, those things are going to happen in what we see as a draft for amendments to 2360 and 1300 in January.
And you've already seen that sort of construct from us.
Okay.
We will, we haven't gone back and updated that, but we, that's the point of us needing to present formal documents to you and your agenda, so you don't rely on sort of the oral piece. What's in your agenda will be our sort of recommendation based on the consideration of these various elements, but we'll, we'll bring it all together.
So, that'll be, as far as you're concerned, all changes necessary to 1300 and all changes necessary to 2360?
Initially, anyway. Yeah.
What do you mean by that?
Well, we're going to go, like, take on the independent school work, we might come back with other pieces of this, and we'll, we'll, I'm sure-
That would be, that would be a separate timeline.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, exactly. The independent school rules are shaping up as a separate timeline, for sure.
Okay. So, you're visualizing that this timeline embraces both 1300 and 2360?
The recommended changes that we've put forward, yes.
So, and I think to that point, is that, to the extent the rules are open, the rules are open.
Right.
So, the state is opening, the agency is opening the 2360 series because it has to.
It has to do the 1300.
Exactly. And because it has to remove the current funding rules that are in there, which are now going to be a 1300 series, and it has to have the definition of special education aligned. So, that does open the rules, which is why it's our opportunity to say, well, wait a minute, we think a critical rule connected to Act 173 is adverse effect. And it's critical in part because it also, removing that also is more consistent with 173 in terms of the, the overall goals of, and policy of Acts 173, which is to address the needs of struggling students.
So, I, I, I am sort of parsing in my head, everything should be aligning with federal guidance. So, in that, I heard you describe a third gate that we have that the federal law does not.
Correct.
So, in my opinion, to the extent we are beginning to more closely align appropriately with federal flexibilities, definition, requirements, it would make all the sense in the world for that to be consistent. I think other things may be more arguable one way or another, or advocacy oriented, that would fall in the category of linear or otherwise, like, it feels black and white to me. So, in my opinion, it would make sense if we are moving towards using federal definitions. We do it consistently.
And that is, we were very mindful of that as we were writing these rules, is being consistent with the federal definition. So, to the extent our Vermont rules are inconsistent with the federal rules, we made proposed changes to reflect the federal rules. So, you're absolutely right, and I appreciate you bringing that up, is that Vermont is really, I believe, one among a very small number of states that incorporates some sort of adverse effect rule. Adverse effect is referred to in the federal rule, but it's not in term, in terms of eligibility for special education services. It's, it's addressed more in terms of defining a specific learning disability, which is a category of disability, which is addressed in Gate 1. So, to, that's, that's, that's an important piece, is that everything we've tried to do is align Vermont rules with the federal rules. We're not asking for something greater, we're asking for what the Vermont, what the federal regulations are.
Refresh my recollection, the big bill changed the due date for the funding rules?
I believe so.
And is, and can we find that date? In the big bill, the due date for the funding rules to be completed?
It started, initiated August. Yeah, so they kind of changed the wording of, you now have an obligation to start them no later than August, where previously you had a November deadline? Yeah.
The funding rules starts, there's no deadline for completion.
I remember, I'm familiar with the GPT system, we were initiated, and it was then they always present.
Okay, thanks.
So, my intent, to your point of, I will provide you with the redlined version of our proposed changes. And, and you may or may not see something different in terms of the actual proposed language, that will depend on conversations that we will continue to have with members of the advisory group. I don't anticipate that the advisory group is going to discuss these further between now and January. There's just too much on the agenda for Monday, or for the January 1st, the meeting we have on January 6th. But we are going to continue to push for this because we think it's really critical to aligning the policy goals of Act 173, and also trying to establish some consistency across the state in terms of how we're, we're determining who is and who is not eligible for special education services.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
A lot of moving parts. We're now going to hear from the agency with regard to New England School for Girls. This is item H in your package.
Emily, since the General Counsel, Agency of Education, heard off-camera stuff to us so far today, the New England School for Girls was approved last year by the State Board of Education. It has received approval from the Department of Children and Families under the separate licensing function of that department to enlarge the enrollment of the school from or to 30 to 49, they approve ranges. So, the current capacity that you have approved is 35, and the new capacity will be 49.
I think that's about a 60% increase. I think that's about a sixty percent increase.
Lawyers really avoid doing math, that's for sure.
And what is the rationale for broadening the age group from eight years to eleven years?
I'm not aware of it because it's DCF's approval, not, the agency did not speak. The age range change, the Department of Children and Families approved that.
Yes, but what, why is the school proposing that?
Maybe they have referrals that go down lower grades.
And the other thing I should have mentioned upfront is that the population of student in the school is out-of-state students who are sent to Vermont. And so it's also as a result of the decisions made by those sending agencies, which are not Vermont agencies. So I think my ability to say where the change is coming from is pretty attenuated. Sorry.
Is that another way of saying you don't know?
I don't know, and the people who know don't work in Vermont.
Do you, this would be a question to the, to you, the agency, as overseers of independent schools, residential independent schools in this case. Is there any concern with a program that mixes such a wide range of ages, early teens to early adults, all being? And from reading the description, they're not separated by age, they're separated by acuity, I guess you might say? Or this, this, their health status, more accurately. So this, this, are there concerns about mixing ages from eleven to twenty-one?
So the agency's oversight of those concerns would be related to the educational concerns of educating students of different age ranges. The safety, we would be worried about any safety concerns as individuals, but the DCF license is specifically focused on health and safety. And I don't know their rules about age ranges.
Officially, it's not our problem, but I'm asking from a point of view of education.
Say that.
At the very least, do you have any concerns about that?
I would assume we're, you know, our concerns, as Emily referred to, would be focused on implementing particularly the IEP's students. And I would imagine that those discussions would occur at the IEP team level in terms of, is it an appropriate placement for an individual student to be situated among peers, you know, similar disability or acuity? But the way the system would work in that regard is that, that really heightened scrutiny would exist at the IEP team level.
Jenna, just to also point out, the appro, the currently approved age range is thirteen to twenty. The request is that the age range shift from thirteen to eleven and from twenty to twenty-one. So that, you know, you're still talking about middle school students being present with students who, in a public school, would have graduated. That was in the initial approval.
Right, so that the age range goes from eight years to eleven years.
Right.
So the I, the IEP, again, if you're not familiar with that process, that's the parent, the LEA, you know, would be, would, in this case, the placement, determine if this is an appropriate placement for an individual student. And there's, there's significant scrutiny to the, the, the safety of the setting and so forth, the appropriateness of the setting. That's faith, the free and appropriate public education aspect has to be determined. And the parents certainly, or the state as a parent, has opportunity through a due process procedure to suggest this would not be an appropriate placement for a student. But it's, it's down to the individual student level. Our, our supervision is on a much broader programmatic level.
And the individual student level is in whatever sending states are.
Yeah, that, that LEA has that responsibility to ensure the faith part.
The independent school team that approved the school, that did a site visit, and I'm sure they checked the campus, and health and safety was probably on their radar, and made sure that the campus is set up so that it was safe.
The broader, the broader supervision's at our level, but the specific programmatic supervision's at the IEP level.
Kim.
Just the, the last bullet indicates that a review of the DCF reports was done as well. So it seems as though there was a tension to that idea, if there were matters of concern. And I think it was helpful, I'm not sure if it was Dan or Emily, that just referenced the notion of age range being middle to school, or maybe it was you, Jenna, to, I am listening. Don't get me wrong, but middle school to having otherwise graduated, and twenty is outside of a regular graduation age, and thirteen and eleven would coexist in middle school. So I'm just thinking that while the years increased for the range by three, the population that that extends to is still the same population that thirteen to twenty would represent in sort of my who's-in-a-building thinking.
Yeah, but this amounts to a sense of middle schoolers being, no, early high schoolers, early high schoolers being schooled with college-age persons.
But thirteen-year-olds are in middle school as, as are eleven.
But they're eleven, but this is eleven now.
Typically fifth graders, but to your twenty-first birthday is, special ed is to your twenty-second birthday, right? So they're capturing people who are eligible for extended services, past, maybe past graduation, or in, in, maybe other three.
Right, I'm sorry, eleven.
Eleven to fifteenth.
Fifth grade through sophomore year in college.
I would, I would guess that, sure, but I, I think that people needing services here are probably looking for a high school completion.
Oh, I understand that, but I'm just speaking about their maturity, their development. Just all of that, but I, I don't think, I think Dan has answered the question.
Yeah, this is special education, which, you know, really, you're talking about this age range, eleven to twenty-one, and those programs are defined by the IEPs. So that's really the group.
Right. Sabina.
So I assume, right, they're have, they're asking for more, to be able to serve more kids, which means they're getting more employees working there. So I feel like that would address the concern of, is it safe to have, you know, eleven-year-olds in a school with twenty-one-year-olds? Like, you know, they're getting more staff, which means that they are gonna have a larger range of, like, possibilities for them to do. Because just 'cause you're getting more people doesn't mean that every single staff member's gonna be responsible for the same thing. It means you're just gonna have more people there. And so then that, I think, would address the issue of, is it safe? It, it would be because there are gonna be more employees working there, and they're all gonna have probably different, you know, backgrounds and different, um, specific roles in the school itself, you know? So like, even when you look at, like, bigger high schools in general, you look at like a, a small high school that serves, what, three hundred kids? And then a school that serves twelve hundred kids, you know? All the teachers that the twelve hundred school is employing, they're not all teaching the same thing. You suddenly can have, like, you know, offer three different world languages instead of just one world language at this larger school. So I think that's kind of one way to compare, is just because now they have a small group of staff members. Now they're gonna have more staff members with a wider range of abilities, therefore giving the school more resources to deal with this larger range of students.
Do we know that there's an intention to significantly increase staffing?
I would assume with the increase in students, but.
I don't have any information with me about the staffing pattern of this school, but the same rules about ratios and all this, all of that would apply. I'm not sure what regulation at DCF, the school is under for staff-to-child ratio, but that, that is a safety geared rule.
Yes, can I, could we just, aren't most of the students there from our state?
All of them.
All of them. So that puts a different spin on this, then, in terms of.
Well, it does and it doesn't, I think it's still.
We're not responsible for the usual, um.
Yes, but we're still overseeing the program in our state, so we still have some responsibility there.
We, I'll just mention, we have a lot of Vermont students who go to similar programs that are not located in Vermont. There's one in Massachusetts, there's one in Colorado, and think about the Colorado State Board of Education having this conversation about our Vermont students, you know?
Yeah, and actually, we kind of take it the other way. We think we have a heightened responsibility to ensure these students are in a good position because we, we don't know what's on the other end of that decision-making process.
Sabina.
And so, are you prob, might not have the answer to this question, but, you know, I assume with more kids means it's gonna cost more money. So do we know why they're suddenly choosing to do this and where, like, this funding would be coming from, that they're, you know, they have an increase? Or like, what specifically is causing them to ask for more students?
I think there's more demand with this population of student.
I took the trouble of going back to see the board's review of this school's initial approval. That took place at sometime in probably November, December nineteenth of twenty eighteen, almost exactly a year ago. And at the time, the minutes say that the motion was made and seconded and approved unanimously to approve the motion to accept the secretary's recommendation. But discussion followed regarding low ratio of staff to students. Corporate structure, rulemaking in Act one seventy-three, updating standard, focus on outcomes and accountability. Sometimes people say low ratio, and they mean a low number of teachers per students, and other times they mean a low number of students per teachers. This says a low ratio of staff to students. That means comparatively few staff to students. So if staffing seemed to be low, and now the school is significantly increasing students, then the question gets to be, is the school making a corresponding increase in staffing? We have to presume that the, it, the agency employee, or employee who reviewed this proposal addressed that question. We would hope so. This is one of those cases where it'd be nice to be able to speak to the person who visited the school so that they could provide us with direct knowledge in answer to a question like that. Since earlier the board had observed that the staff ratio seemed pretty low.
And we did offer to invite the representatives from the New England School for Girls, and at our agenda planning, meaning the chair indicated that wouldn't be necessary, so we did not.
Not the school, the, I'm, I'm talking about the agency staff person responsible for this review and who wrote it.
Yeah, it's, it's not my intention to bring agency staff to this meeting in that regard.
How do we get answers to our questions then?
You, if, my, my intention is to follow your regulations and to formulate a recommendation. So you have before you the secretary's recommendation. If the information presented is inadequate, then you would defeat the recommendation, and I would go back and figure that out. But the challenge with bringing staff, firstly, you know, the issue of capacity comes up repeatedly. We can't have staff come to these meetings to answer questions that might, might have influenced my recommendation. So I have to look at the balance of it and make a decision. And likewise, it, it helps, I think, enforce the board's decision-making based on its regulation, not based on other, some subjective measures you might, might or might not hear through the process, so.
No.
All are well-taken comments, and I appreciate them, but I'm left with the same kind of feeling of, well, how big is this problem? Is it growing? Is it increasing? What kind of staffing do we need? Which is a bigger question than just the approval of this particular place. I would like to hear from the people who are involved for maybe a twenty or thirty-minute segment, which talks about this situation of what are the changes with girls and with this school and so forth, and get up to speed on it.
When you say the people who are involved, who, who do you have in mind?
Well, we can talk about the agency staff, but I was thinking about the school people themselves.
The, in other situations, we have, of course, had representatives of the school come and answer questions.
That's true.
Is that what you're proposing in this case?
I was more interested in the treatment side of things than the financial side.
Well, when you say treatment, the agency and we are concerned about the education of these children, not, perhaps I don't know what you mean by treatment.
What's a residential treatment at school?
Right.
Special, and special ed only?
The, special education categories are in paragraph two.
So I'm still not quite clear, are we talking about matters that concern the agency of human services, or are matters that concern the agency of education?
Well, I'd just like to hear more about whether we have a growing problem with girls, of what sort, and what kind of treatment we might be having, and what can we look forward to for the future?
At, at this school, or just generally in Vermont?
Generally in Vermont.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, we could come back to that as a topic sometime. But apropos to the application in question.
Their serving eleven-year-olds.
They may be, because they got an approval from AHS to do so. Normally, at this point, the board considers a motion. And you have a proposed motion in front of you on the green sheet, you don't have to read the whole thing if you don't want. And then you can take action according to that. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that we accept the secretary's recommendation on approval of the Vermont, New England School for Girls, sorry, to enable them to increase the number of female identifying youth from thirty to forty-nine, and change the age range from thirteen to twenty years of age, from thirteen to twenty years of age to eleven to twenty-one years of age.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. You have the motion in front of you. Is there further discussion?
I'm just recognizing that the request is to expand the ages and number of students that they're serving in what I consider to be a reasonable range and responsive to the demand. My expectation would be they will staff accordingly, they'll have resources to do so for those students that are coming. So our other interest in either process or greater information in terms of this population with respect to our Vermont students is interesting, but doesn't hold this up for me. And it is, strikes me as potentially a separate agenda item for another time.
I say that, I'm sorry.
Like, the, the broader considerations and future processes regarding who comes or who doesn't come to defend these recommendations may be a topic for another time, or even after the approval or failure of this. But that would be a change that's separate from what is being asked here, is simply to expand the years of ages that are being served and the number of students being served.
At a school that has already been approved?
At a school that has already been approved, so I was just trying to contain what we are approving.
Right, right, right. Yeah, whether or not the, it's, it's always been left kind of case by case as to whether or not the board requests or requires that the owners or directors of the school come and be available to the board to answer questions. In this case, after counsel briefed me on the matter, we concluded it was not necessary to bring a representative of the school here to answer questions, that the, the matter in front of us seemed comparatively straightforward.
Yes, they are two separate issues. One has the philosophical and social aspects, and the other is just the nuts and bolts of what's written on the green sheet.
Sabina.
To your point about staffing, it says here on their website, the staff ratio is one to four with the ability to provide short-term staffing for crisis stabilization. So if that provides an answer for your worry about the previous
Yeah.
issue that popped up when we were, when the board originally accepted the approval.
I will move the question.
That requires a vote, a two-thirds vote of the board, I think we can.
Either way.
Do you, do you, I understand, do you really want to proceed with that?
Do we have another discussion?
You can make that question, but you've made a motion. Do you wish to?
I've made a motion.
It's been moved that the question be called. That requires a two-thirds vote in order to pass.
Yay.
The, those in favor, please let me give you a say, aye?
Aye.
Nay? The motion carries. The motion carries. The question now before you is, shall the motion carry? That is, the motion that the state board granted the amendment and so on and so forth. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? The ayes have it. You have approved the secretary's recommendation for the doing the school for girls. Time now is ten minutes of twelve. Our next topic is a fifty-five-minute topic, and I would suggest... Maureen, would it be possible to move to lunch right now? Let's do that. Let's do lunch now and then we'll pick up topic I after lunch. Let's resume. We're at item I. And just let me tee this up a bit, if I may, Dan. This all traces back to our decision at the last board meeting to fry our wings at conducting an information gathering session on a topic of current interest in education. And you'll recall that in our discussion at the last meeting, we talked about several different possible topics: dual enrollment, pre-K, you name it. And I think it was Kim who wisely said, why don't we ask the committees on education if there's a topic that would be of interest to them? Because part of the premise of this project is to gather information on a topic and then make that information available to the general assembly, to committees on education. The idea being that we want to start practicing the business of learning about a topic and preparing a report and furnishing to the legislature or the governor or the secretary or whoever cares what we've learned. And so I did what Kim suggested, and both of those two chairs, on their own, without consulting each other, came back and said, oh, of all the topics you've listed, our favorite or the first one we'd like to hear about would be proficiency-based learning. They said, we're hearing a lot about that, so if you guys would go out and learn about it. And I had told them we would not be being advocates, we would simply be reporters. So they said, if you would do that, that would be a great help to us and we'd want to have you come in as soon as your report is ready and present it to us. Because both committees apparently feel that there's enough kind of smoke in the air about PBL that they've got to kind of look at. So I think it was at the last meeting, Dan and Kim were talking, and I think I overheard Dan pointing out that the origins of proficiency-based learning are not what most of us had assumed. If I recall, remember, if I recall correctly, our colleague Peter, who was president of the creation of 177...
He was.
...had said, oh, it came out of 177. And Dan said, well, not quite. So Dan's here to tell us how it did come to pass, just so we know. This is not anything for us to be judging. It's just sort of so we know where this came from because it is a matter of some controversy. Dan?
Thank you. So I'm going to present from here. The slides I'm going to share were in your packet ahead of time, and I think there's hard copy on the tables. I also sent you a couple of background information, sort of personal documents I thought you might find interesting. One is a document from the state board on transformation, this concept which I'll talk about here shortly, and then a larger report from the Policy Transformation Commission, which is a really interesting document that, in many cases, I would argue, lays out the foundations of all the major education policies in Vermont that we have going on today. So I'm going to, as John mentioned, the invitation was sort of to provide you some background information on where proficiency-based learning comes from. This is from my perspective as an educator in Vermont. I was principal of a pre-K through twelve school from 1997 to 2004. So some of these ideas began to percolate a bit when I was a principal. And then I'd been a superintendent from 2004 to 2016. And as a technologist, some of you might be aware of that background, I've always been involved in any, most of the conversations, policy conversations in the state in that time period that pertain to the future transformation, technology and so forth. So some of this is my personal observation as I had, as I appreciate the opportunity to go back and sort of revisit this and probe my own memory, how it came to be, but also some interpretation for me based on that experience. That's why I shared that with you. So from my perspective, this idea emerges in the concept of transformation, which we didn't really have a firm concept of what we meant by that. I think there certainly, you can look at this famous document Vermont called High Schools on the Move, that pointed to the idea of high school transformation. And I think there is an element of proficiency-based learning that's largely focused on high schools. But ultimately, that culminated in a retreat that was held at Grafton Inn, and I was one of the folks that attended that retreat. At the time, most of you might know Bill Talbot, who was long-serving CFO of the agency at the time. He was the interim commissioner of the Department of Education, and he more or less presided over that retreat. And this was a retreat of current educational leaders, some folks that had been around for a while, thought leaders basically of Vermont education. And we were sequestered for a couple of days at the Grafton Inn. And I don't remember we coming, us coming to agreement on anything other than we could not agree on what the word transformation meant. You know, so there was broad agreement on that. But we basically kicked around ideas about how to, I would say, modernize Vermont's education system. Perhaps the impetus with this was also the turn of the century, so we were thinking a lot about 21st century, you know. But we didn't really come away with much other than the fact that we felt some urgency to address the future of Vermont education. That experience ultimately resulted in the formation of a commission to follow up on those initial ideas. And that, I was not part of that commission. That's the report I was referring to, that's sort of the outcome of that work, that identified a series of discrete policy strategies at the time. But I added 2009 to this because that's the date of the Policy Commission Transformation or Policy Transformation Commission Report. But ultimately, some other just sort of residual effects of that. At one point, Bill Ramond, who's listed as one of the authors of the board's document on transformation, the agency actually had a deputy commissioner for transformation. That was the formal title. So, and then ultimately, a policy research team was assembled in 2011. So there was, you know, the point is when we start talking about the origins of proficiency-based learning, this is well-grounded in a sort of a Vermont trajectory. Some people have pointed to like the influence of outside think tanks and so forth. Yes, there were folks involved, but this is really part of a Vermont conversation that can be traced back to at least 2002 about transforming Vermont high schools, if not the education system as a whole.
I was at that Grafton Inn.
Were you? Yeah.
It was really exciting. There was a good energy. It wasn't like they came out with a solution, but there was a lot of, you know, there was a unique feeling about that in terms of just, we're out of time and we're ready to do something. I thought it was kind of exhilarating. It was exciting.
Yeah, I would agree. I would also say, I mean, the issue of high school transformation, you know, to summarize that a bit, really is there's two elements of that. One would be the perennial issue of high school becoming, needing high school to be more relevant for students. You know, I often comment, if you remember your days in high school when you said, you know, I don't know when I'm ever going to have to learn that, sorry, heard students say that. So, you know, that was an issue that was present at that retreat, you know, how to make high school more relevant, but also responding to the needs of other stakeholders outside the system, in particular businesses that were commenting on the students were not prepared. Students didn't know how to do things. Students were not proficient in things. So it's sort of this combination of looking at relevance from the student's perspective, personalization we call it today, but also making sure that they can do things proficiency. That sort of leans it to looking at high school as sort of being an antiquated concept, perhaps, that needed to be transformed as a result of the urgency of the 21st century. That comes forward in the form of some recommendations in that Policy Transformation Commission Report that I mentioned, but I just thought I'd also lay out for you sort of the trajectory inside the political conversation as well, because this transformation conversation did become political at the same time. The high school completion, flexible pathways and so forth, that can go back to about 2006. I can remember the governor at the time, Governor Shumlin, had a major, you know, plank in his platform about, you know, making high school more relevant and transforming high school. In 2009, we had the flexible pathways again, now showing up for the first time actually in statutory language. And then Act 77 itself in 2013 includes these, these are the major elements of Act 77, flexible pathways, personalized learning plans, the grade seven through twelve, dual enrollment and early college. Those are the major, when we talk about 77, that's really it. There is no reference to proficiency-based learning in Act 77. Right? But it certainly is, I'll make the case, is part of a larger trajectory on transformation. But there was an expectation, I think, that the state board would modify its regulations, the school quality standards to support this work. But the advocates and so forth thought that the legislature had a key role in modifying statutory framework to allow that to happen. So we dig into the regulatory language, meaning the state board's rules. First, it's important to acknowledge that Act 77 itself, the law, does not include any reference to proficiency-based learning. But one of the elements that emerges from that proficiency commission or the Transformation Commission Report is the idea that the state board should, the recommendation was, the state board should engage in examination of its regulations. And this issue from a policy perspective of the state board being independent, you know, an independent regulator of the education system, that sort of manifests itself ultimately in its authority over quality standards and what previously were called school quality standards, which were basically inputs, if you will, like so many students or so many teachers per subject and so forth. The idea was to change those regulations to be more focused on outputs. So the shift from school quality standards to education quality standards. The proficiency-based learning is mentioned in the Policy Transformation Commission's report as a discrete strategy, and also the commission recommended that the home of proficiency-based learning most appropriately should be in the state board's regulation, not in state law. So that's ultimately what happened, was the proficiency-based learning requirement ended up included in the education quality standards, which were a major sort of process in terms of right rulemaking, with a lot of public stakeholder involvement. As you know, very few things change in regulation in the state without elaborate buy-in from the broader stakeholder community. And as I mentioned, this can be seen as a shift away from inputs to outputs.
Dan, according to what I read, you just said that the report of the policy commission recommended that the home of PBL should be in regulation, not in law. Where did it say that and why?
Yeah, I don't have the report unfortunately right in front of me. This is kind of where I'm filling in and interpreting based on my experience and my memory of the time. I was on the trustees for the Superintendent Association, Jay, were you there for those conversations as well?
Yes.
And I think, you know, firstly, there's a recommendation that the state board revise its quality standards to be focused more on outputs as inputs. And there's the recommendation emphatically to endorse proficiency-based learning. I guess my, there's a set of recommendations for the legislature to pursue essentially, and then there's, I think, emphasis that the state board would take this on as a separate piece of action, but that's my interpretation. I don't know if it says on like page four, this is what you should do. But there certainly was an expectation or a recommendation that the state board would revise the quality standards in a manner consistent with the idea of proficiency, because proficiency is based on an outcome.
Right.
So, you know, in terms of the timeline, which is, you know, the other point I just offer in terms of the backdrop of this conversation the board seeks to engage in, some of what we're seeing in terms of the urgency to do this is driven by a timeline that's in your regulation. So there's a date of 2020, which, you know, I trace back into some earlier elements of this. But students graduating after this date are required to show proficiency. So schools, school districts right now have a sense of urgency of making that transition to 2020. And that's where some of the political urgency or controversy around the topic is now emerging, is the folks are seeking to comply with that deadline. But this is, I quoted the language exactly so you know what that looks like. Student meets requirements for graduation, a student demonstrates evidence of proficiency in curriculum, in completion of any other requirement specified by the local board. Requirement is effective no later than September 2014 for students entering seventh grade and secondary progression for anticipated graduation date of 2020 with each subsequent class. So the point I'd make here is that there is, I think, easy to establish that proficiency-based learning is connected to high school transformation. And certainly, this regulatory language speaks to students specifically in grade seven or later than grade 12, because we do define, for tuition purposes, we define secondary education in Vermont as starting with grade seven. However, the way the regulation is written, it also could be applied to elementary education as well. So there is an assertive, an expectation that the culminating experience certainly of education of our system is graduation of high school. But the way the regulation is written, that it also could be interpreted to apply for elementary grades as well. But I would think the political aspect of this is largely driven by that 2020 deadline and, of course, the inconsistent manner in which this initiative is enrolled out across the state. So just real quick, finally, the other political element of this is this concept of proficiency-based grading. So we hear a lot about that in the testimony the board, you know, takes and also as I travel around, there's nothing in the regulation about proficiency-based grading. So conceivably, a district could accomplish the regulatory requirement of adopting proficiency-based learning without changing its grading system. But districts have engaged in that work pretty extensively, through some support and encouragement from the agency itself. But, you know, where I see nuance around the state in terms of adoption of proficiency-based learning, a lot of that nuance is around how the districts have chosen to deal with the grading issue. Where some districts on one end of the spectrum, I can think of like South Burlington, which pretty much still has its traditional grading system, and then they report proficiencies off on the side of a transcript or a report card, where other districts have totally abandoned the letter grade system in favor of just proficiency-based reporting. So we run the gamut across the state right now in terms of grading, but the point I'd make is that grading is not included in your regulation at all. Other than this definition I do refer to, but it's not, there's no requirement to adopt proficiency-based grading.
So it's hard for me to understand if grading wasn't even mentioned in our, in the words of rule. At what point do the schools all start messing around with grading?
Yeah, I think there was, you know, it's like messing around, but a lot of, there's a lot of acknowledgement within the profession that grading is sort of a cause of some of the irrelevance. Back to the relevance issue, students don't feel a sense of buy-in to their learnings since the grades provide, very traditional grades provide little, very little feedback on your learning. They basically speak to the course progression. So it's not a hard association to make between proficiency-based learning and grading. And I think as educators engaged in the work around proficiency-based learning, the issue of grading emerged pretty quickly as a way, or at least something that had to be addressed. Some districts, I think, saw it more as a high-leverage opportunity to do the proficiency-based learning, you know, like if we do the grading, then the learning will change in accordance with the regulation, where others might have started with the learning and said, well, you know, if we don't change the grading, we're not going to be able to do it. But the point that where I address almost weekly as a secretary, it was a subject of my sort of comment in the media a couple of weeks ago, that proficiency-based grading is not being required by the state of Vermont, you know. In our formal guidance that we put out in the agency, that's like one of the first things that's across the top of our FAQs, proficiency-based grading is not required. So I'll hear that. I was on a call on a radio show yesterday with the governor and one of the callers was like, you know, what are you doing about these grades? And I'm like, wow, you know, you know, it's a hard thing to answer because we don't require it. I acknowledge that it's part and parcel of the proficiency-based learning work, but, you know, I think where we're at now, and this is me editorializing, that we have districts that have figured... that have figured this out, not through, without some intense political conversation with communities, but in other places it's very controversial, in other places it's not. But just for your purpose, draw the distinction between the two, just from a strictly regulatory standpoint, you do not require a proficiency-based grading?
Has, there seems to be out in the, among the communities, some notion that it's required.
Right.
Has any guidance from the agency suggested that?
No, not that I can find, and we're emphatically, across the top of our guidance, we say we do not require proficiency-based grading.
Can we go back to your comment about whether PBL is required in earlier grades? Would you say that again?
Yeah, it's, I wanted to address that issue because it comes up sometimes. The way the language is written, let's see if I can go back a slide to bring up the exact language in the regulation. So a student meets requirements for graduation when the student demonstrates evidence of proficiency in the curriculum. So there's a specific reference to the concluding educational experience, you know, in order to graduate from high school, one has to demonstrate proficiency. In order to get to that place though, through sort of backward design, one would assume you'd have to develop proficiency all along the continuum, you know? So you just don't start moving to proficiencies in grade 12, or even in grade seven, you have to start earlier in order to build that into an understanding of one's proficiency. I would just say, you know, from a pragmatic standpoint, coincidentally, through this time period in the late 2000s, we have a lot of emphasis at the elementary level on moving to standards-based grading. And the adoption of standards, as propagated under No Child Left Behind Act, led to a lot of curriculum alignment activity at the elementary level, where elementary teachers are aligning their curriculum to standards, which lends itself pretty easily to the proficiency conversation. So it's not necessarily a big jump either here to assume that the regulation has had some impact on the thinking of elementary programs as well.
So that was one reason why Act 77 didn't include the elementary schools, but we felt that they were on that track. What's happened to the Carnegie units in regards to graduation?
Yeah, so just to back up, when we make the crosswalk to 77, you know, we say 77, you know, didn't deal with that. 77, once again, only has these four elements. So this is where, you know, the grade seven through 12 issue shows up in law as it pertains to personalized learning plans, which is a discrete element of Act 77. So in law, students are required to have personalized learning plans in grades seven through 12. That's one place where we see the seven, 12 definition, PLPs. In your regulation, you have reference to proficiency-based graduation, starting with students in grade seven, no later than 2014 or whatever, as they go forward into 2020. But that's sort of the nexus of the seven through 12 issue. So I'm not sure to what extent, Peter, you were there, that the legislature thought about elementary students in terms of PLPs. I know the legislative conversation at the time, and there was some resistance from Vermont NEA and others, that PLPs would be too hard to implement at the elementary level. It wasn't about proficiency-based learning, it was about doing the actual act of PLPs, that it would be too much work, you know, don't have a good information system to manage it and so forth. So my recollection was that the legislature focused in on seven through 12, PLP-wise, because it would have been too hard to implement at the elementary.
More simply, I think, is that the elementary education was much more student-based than the middle school or high schools, was course-based.
Yeah.
There was a big distinction.
Yeah, and then there's a lot more elementary schools, so it would be hard to scale that. And your other question had to...
Well, it was the Carnegie, I mean, it's not my, in regards, you have to get, of course, my daughter was a great example, she had her necessary grades to graduate as a junior, and I'm glad she did, but you could do that back then, it was just a question of, you know, when your ticket got fully launched, you could get out, you know? I don't know where we stand on that for a vote.
Yeah, I'm going to try to jump out to the regulations with this machine, I don't know if it'll do it, but it's useful if you get a chance to go look at your quality standards. So the Carnegie unit is a reference to the minimum number of 120 hours of instruction, essentially, to receive a credit for a course. We still have some of that in the regulation, so it wasn't a complete, there's still elements of the input language in the regulation, but I can't get out to it right now, but it would be a worthy conversation to follow up on it. So, yes, Bill?
I was just thinking, it would probably be useful to look at some of the law, the actual language of the law, to see the nuances, because there's a lot of nuances of interpretation that people have made along the way. So if you'd like to hear the relevant sections of law, we can do that quickly.
Yeah, I would say, I'm going to join the group, I mean, you have my slides, I'll just come over. I think it's a useful grounding for the board to understand the law piece, because there's some dispute at this point. But it does, the larger conversation, I think, is not only about the policy, but the coherence of the policy, you know? In this case, you have an example of a policy that's distributed between regulation and the law, you know?
Where in the law is PBL?
It is not.
Okay.
When I say, when I say the policy goal of personalizing learning or transformation is distributed, PBL is a discrete strategy underneath that, that's in regulation. So this is an example, I would argue, of a policy to transform high school or transform modernized education, and the Vermont response was to do some things in law and do some things in regulation. It's not a clean, sometimes we view the law as sort of like, in the case of 173, where the legislature said, here's what we want you to do, and the state board then creates regulation to implement that law.
We did that with 77, too.
Yeah, right.
I mean, that was the major vehicle within which PBL was located.
Right.
Was in the regulations with 77.
And I, and it was, I don't think from the, from the legislation to help to live it, but I think it was just that we had really had to be weak in women, and we needed to figure that out.
And I look at the other, the other policy that's not really mentioned in the Policy Transformation Commission report, but the other key policy here in the portfolio of transformation is the change from the commissioner to the secretary.
Oh, absolutely.
So in many cases, what you have here in terms of your regulatory responsibility is sort of left over from the older understanding where the state board regulated and ran the education system independent of legislative authority. So, you know, we have a trajectory historically with, you know, with No Child Left Behind Act, where increased federal involvement in education, you certainly, as a result of the Brigham decision, have more state involvement in education in Vermont, this is all post-1997. But I think the trajectory on the quality standards is really sort of an artifact left over from the time where it was, the state board was considered to be an independent regulator of the education system, and perhaps the legislature, you know, was just starting to sort of examine where that nexus was a little bit. But right in the middle of this whole transition, the fundamental change of Act 98 occurs, right? So it's not an unimportant consideration. It's not really contemplated in the Policy Transformation Commission report, but many of the stakeholder groups that were concerned with the outcome piece of education were in the business community, and the business community, and particularly the Vermont Business Roundtable, were very strong supporters of the giving the governor direct appointment for the secretary. So these things are all, you know, it's hard for me to separate all these strands out.
With the politics.
Yeah, yeah, so that's why we have this coherence issue around this policy, I think.
So historically, how, I mean, if this, if PBL was somehow implied by the commission along with flexible pathways and a lot of other things, why didn't 77 include PBL? Since it seems to be part and parcel of flexible pathways and kind of reinventing, going to standards and all that. I mean, you were there, why wasn't PBL part of the conversation?
I think we were more in the big picture, and I just don't think, again, we really got into that in, do you remember, Bill?
Yeah. I would look towards educational quality standards as being part of this evolution that they thought would, I'm interpreting here, that would cover PBS, but didn't say so explicitly. What the law does say is the school substantially meets the standards adopted by rule of the state board regarding conditions, practices, and resources of schools. Right there, it gives the state board authority, 16 VSA 165.3. And then it goes on to say, the standards shall address those aspects of the following that are most closely associated with improving student performance. School leadership, blah, 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 instructional practices and curriculum leadership, content and coordination. And then it goes into, on further down, it goes into the, Commissioner's secretary shall determine whether you're improving student performance in relationship to the standards for student performance set forth in subdivision 164, et cetera. So what it does say is the state board is the authority to set the standards and make sure that they're followed. Does the word proficiency exist in here anywhere? I don't see it.
And the other thing I think I do remember is that at that point, we were reluctant to impose a one-size-fits-all approach to what it would take to get this implemented, and we let that up to be dealt with at the local level, and that probably was a weak link, you know, because everybody...
And I think three of the, you know, if you look at the four strategies under 77, three of them are really outside the purview of this body. You know, you're talking about structural changes with the college, you know, interrelationship with the college, flexible pathways, early college. So I could make a case there for three of the four strategies that the legislature, you know, had a role more so than the state board in terms of addressing those structural issues. The one that's an outlier is then the PLP, because the PLP could have been addressed by the state board in regulation, if there was that kind of emphatic coherence on what they wanted to do. But for whatever reason, that's in the law, and not in regulation.
So are we at a point where we're trying to find a uniform system and our interpretation, how this is all being applied at this point? Is that what we're trying to do?
It's not what this board is doing.
What's that?
That is not what this board is doing.
This is, we discussed, and who, would you have to go back to the legislature to have this addressed then?
I think, you know, to the chair's point, you're in kind of what I've been sort of promoting for you is to at least be in a position as a formal entity to take stock of the situation. I think it would be helpful to use your leadership in that regard, because, you know, firstly, it's your responsibility as a regulation, but there's not good coherence around this. The legislature really doesn't have direct ownership over the issue, and it might be useful for the state board to use its authority to, or at least its bully pulpit, to understand better what's going on in the state.
Do you have any recommendation of that should be best addressed?
I think the, you know, I've been working with John on his formulation of a disposition of the board, I think it's, it would be very useful to convene those conversations.
On this particular issue?
Yeah, it's, you know, if you, it's interesting to know that your, my interpretation of your work through the retreat and your strategic vision is that you want to elevate your position in the policy discourse, and here's an issue that's waiting for someone to investigate.
Well, and also that we want to interact at the district level too, have a direct relationship, develop relationships there as well.
From the legislation that I think people were using to push this kind of interpretation, this is the duties of supervisory union board, and the explicit language that delegates to the supervisory union, the curriculum thing, but you'll notice, notice the following interesting language. Establish a supervisor, each supervisory union shall have a supervisory union-wide curriculum by either developing it, blah, blah, blah. The curriculum, quote, shall meet the requirements adopted by the state board under the subdivision I read before. So it very expressly says that the local does it, but they have to do it under the rules of the state board. And it sort of talks both sides.
The, I sent to all of you maybe a week ago, just a note explaining why Dan was on the agenda with this topic, because it sort of came out of the blue and that, oh, he was going to just explain the origins, and that, to our surprise, or the surprise of many of us, the PBL is not a matter of law, but a matter of rules. And I sent a copy of that note to the two chairs of the committees, just as a courtesy. I've been keeping them kind of up to speed on the board's work leading up to this inquiry that we're conducting in January, because actually, they're our customers, as it were. And one of them wrote back and said, oh my, this complicates everything. And what I think that chair was saying was, here we've got a program that's been mandated on the schools, essentially what's called an unfunded mandate, adopted by six unelected members of a board. And I think there's going to be some blowback about this, as people say, wait a minute, wouldn't you think something as big and as complicated as that ought to have come from the legislature? And I remain frankly baffled as to how and why that happened. I mean, of all the elements, proficiency-based learning that are related to setting the platform for proficiency-based learning, flexible pathways and other elements of 77, of all of those things, the big gorilla in the room is implementing proficiency-based learning. I mean, it's, and, you know, this board, myself included, have been sort of clucking our gums at the legislature for the last couple of years, saying, you folks are doing an awful lot of initiative overload, and you need to back off and give the schools some room. And it turns out that one of the huge initiatives that's overloading them was adopted by this board without legislation. So I think the former board has put this board in a very awkward position, where people can easily say to us, well, why should we trust you guys? You're the ones who went and imposed an unfunded mandate on us with no legislative hint or guidance at all, let alone authorization. And I think that's a pretty fair question.
But do you think we, this board or this previous board did it unto themselves, or don't you think there was input from the agency and the secretary at the time?
Oh, there was huge advocacy across the community.
Absolutely.
I mean, people were looking for regulatory support to do the work.
In fairness to the former board, right, there was complicity, if you will, if not aggressive advocacy.
Coordination.
Yeah.
My question is, we can go on to the cows come home in terms of trying to figure out how we got here, but should we be addressing what's going to be done about it, who's going to do it?
Well, if you don't understand how you got here, you're not likely to figure out how to not do it again. And I would actually suggest that one of the, this gives, this is yet another reason why separation of the agency and the board is a healthy thing. Because frankly, the board was, in this case, highly influenced by the agency. And it wouldn't be the first, and it's not the last time. And so to that extent, the board kind of got out of its lane in terms of its legal authorities at the urging of the agency. A long time ago, I don't know how it happened or who it was, it's history, but it seems to me that all of this is yet another reason why...
I was, or Jay's here, but don't you think that this was a consensus amongst the education leaders in the state?
Sure, yeah, and you know, John's conclusion, and this is another example of whether it's separation, I would say it's another, to throw another lens on it, which, you know, I love to throw a monkey wrench into it, is it's another example why there shouldn't be a state board. You know, so you have the state board creating policy separate from what the legislature wanted.
And separate from the agency.
And some legislative leader saying they don't even remember why, you know, so there's no appreciation of what's been going on in the trajectory of these initiatives as they've piled up. And I'm not advocating for dissolution of the state board, but what I am advocating for is, and this is just on my experience and what I've been promoting as secretaries, we need, we need to have better coherent policy in the state and education. Education is too important to be left to sort of haphazard initiatives and us sort of, I don't think this is a bad initiative, it's just how it's been implemented in the context of everything else. There's only so much capacity in the field to do change, and this is, this is the result of these things being layered on top of each other.
Yeah. And clearly, excuse me, Kim, you wanted to speak?
It feels a little bit like a chicken or the egg kind of situation, because, and this is in my limited experience, but in getting legislation passed, there's sometimes intention for why it be vague, or lacking specificity, because there's an interest in getting it passed. And the more words, the more to argue with, the less likely it moves, or it doesn't happen. And I don't want to, I'm not, I'm just, in my observation, it seems as though that happens. And so, to the extent there's not supposed to be any sort of interpretation with regulation, there would need to be far greater specificity in the law. So I don't, you know, I'm not sure which comes first in this challenge, because if the purpose of Act seventy-seven isn't to transform education in a way that is meeting the personalized learning goals and the needs of the business community by virtue of things like flexible pathways or dual enrollment or early college, in the absence of expecting proficiencies to be demonstrated for purposes of graduation, how do you know whether any of those things are happening? So it doesn't seem like this huge jump to try and figure out, how will you be evaluating whether one has accomplished these things in their graduation? And still, there is such a wide range of its implementation in the state that the bigger problem seems to me that there's not the support put behind either regulation or law to say, "Here isn't a best practice example of how this can happen." Because that's, I think, where each trying to create it on their own have limited capacity, have limited resources, and reinventing the wheel has not benefited any of us in our small sizes, even in our larger schools and our sizes. There would be difference in how you would see implementation in the first largest high school in the state and the second largest high school in the state. So...
Can I just say, and this is just very personal and perhaps sounds trite, but there is, my personal saying is, democracy and education have in common that it's also work in progress. There is never a final solution. I think this was a good, a fair, good-intentioned attempt to deal with the challenges of trying to prepare our kids for their adult lives, in the best way we thought, to get away from that cookie cutter Carnegie unit, you, once you've gotten past that, you're good to go, without even, without fully looking at that person. And that was the intent of this. And, you know, we should keep, we should keep on this path of doing the best we can. And these are challenging times, no doubt about it. There's no certainty about much now in terms of what our expectations can be. Anyway, so I don't know where we go from here, but I do think that it is an issue, and however we are not, should be involved in trying to clear this up and it gets better, whatever it takes. But, I guess that's it. It takes people like us, and teachers, you know, to do the best they can. And there's no malfeasance or, you know, it's just, there are a lot of laws that are passed, and then, you know, a multiple are ineffective, they can't be actually enacted, because it can't be, you know, there's no way to actually assure that they're, you know, needs of laws.
I think there's a lot of pieces that Kim had made reference to, jagged edges of old legislation which haven't been cleaned up, contradictions, and supervisory union powers that says, "Yes, we do it, no, we don't." And we can trace back to at least the early nineteen twenties, in which we did have states' curriculum, state textbook, and everybody was doing the same thing. And that has shifted several times during the years, as this same argument has been refolded.
The curriculum was a sacred cow, no question.
Maybe we can invite Jay to offer your comment.
Okay. I'm very, very open to it.
No, we're here.
So, one other feature from this historical perspective, if you remember that, when, year after the law passed, and we're looking at proficiency-based learning type system, the Institute of Education hired a, hired Great Schools Partnership, and made, again, did a lot of training through the Superintendent and Principalship teams, and Great Schools Partnership must be the greatest that were, I don't want to say have issued with, that all the time controversy over the recording system, people are complaining about, not understood the learnings taking place in classroom. Much of that comes from what the educators were taught through Great Schools Partnership and the training that was A O E, all good pens, was provided across the state. I went through that myself, they're using horizontal rubrics, one-two-four systems, they're using, um, besting and reporting before hired, all research-based, but maybe in some places what's happened is they've got one name two, in terms of the recording aspect, but other places have said, "We're going to teach with proficiency, but we're going to still eat A B C, instead of one, two, three, four, play good with A B C." And it's been more easy to swallow for some of the local people. And you'll see that in different places, where some places have said, "No, we can do A B C," but other places have said, "Well, we don't have A B C, we're not really doing that anymore, but easier for parents to understand." So you've got that dynamic that's out there too. And I do think Peter answered the point, I think that people that tried to implement this underground law all did the best they could. There also was emphasis, I think it was the NSA's report before you started there, if I'm not wrong, that some systems really started off by mostly on the P L D, others focused mostly on P B L, and it's hard also on both of them at the same time, they both provide enough of these, just some of the people.
I would just make the observation of both Kim and Peter, this, you know, this, to me, just from a strategic standpoint, sounds like a, you know, if we contemplate what the role the Board would be, this is the type of conversation that would be really useful in our state, because no one's, no one's looking at the big picture, so to speak. You know, I see the legislature, they're attentive to the urgent issues of refining things, and, you know, fundamental constitutional constructs and the funding and so forth.
Excuse me, they often feel compelled to do something.
But they also feel compelled to do something, and that also gets caught up in tweaking and refining. But to sit back more globally and look at how these things have come together, and to highlight the pieces, in this case, as a coherent approach, I think, I could see that being a very useful role for the State Board.
Thank you. I just want to interrupt and say Sabina has to go. Sabina managed to be here despite the fact that she has a whole bunch of exams, papers due, and other things. On this day...
There's a hockey game.
And a hockey game tonight. So we thank you for really rearranging your life, and I think it's a great success at integrating competing and conflicting objectives.
Yeah, and hearing your voice.
Well, I'm excited for the Rattlin' meeting. I think that'll be really interesting to hear, just because, you know...
It will be interesting.
...luck with the game.
Thank you. Hoping to win.
I know that Sabina shared with us in the past, and I'm just going to ask if it's okay with you if I share a conversation when we were driving here, because I love our drives to and from the meetings, and we get to hear a little bit more, but she was sharing her experience with proficiency-based grading and retaking and being able to demonstrate proficiency and what's learned in that process. And I think in what I've heard from how internalized that is, as she shared with us at our retreat, I think one of her worksheets she was working on, and the standard was at the top, and, you know, she was very clear on what proficiency it was addressing. And it strikes me as a situation where that has been implemented in a way that the students understand the why versus a checklist on the what. And where there are occasions where they can sort of refine their work and resubmit, it's not a, "Don't bother doing your best work the first time." It's, you have to, that process of resubmitting is a process, right?
Yeah.
It, and she has to demonstrate her learning and improving it.
Yeah.
So there's a lot learned in that, it sounded like, in our casual conversation.
Yeah, I mean, for most teachers, when it comes to reassessing on something, I have to demonstrate that I've done something to improve my knowledge of that target. So like, when it comes to reassessing on a chem test, and I want to do that, I have to show some sort of work, is I put in extra work to learn more about this topic, because, you know, maybe I got a two-point-five on it. So that means I'm not very good at it, but I put in some time, I went and I did extra worksheets, revised my test or something, and then I get the ability to reassess. Or if I'm resubmitting an English paper, I have to go through and highlight all of the corrections I made, so the teachers can see that I went through and I said, "Here are the mistakes I made, here's how I fixed them, now I understand what I need to do better in order to get the higher grade or become proficient in that certain target."
And then not to keep dragging it on you, but they report on both grades, or numbers that maybe grownups understand as well as grownups' parents, those of us of a different generation, understand, C V U provides both a number grade we would get.
I'm going to have to interrupt you. I think that we need to talk in the next section about how much we bring our personal experiences or opinions into this.
I was just hoping to get Sabina's, because she's got an example.
I understand, but frankly, we're going to enter into something like quasi-judicial process. That is to say, it's not legally a quasi-judicial process. But the obligation that we will have in conducting this hearing and forming a report is to report only on what we learned in the hearing. We can't each be going out there gathering our own evidence and expecting that that's going to be part of the Board's report. So I'm happy to, you know, but I think we're going to have to all be willing to just say, "I'm done learning about this until we have this hearing, and then we'll rely on what we are told at the hearing, and that's what we will report on." So, but we'll talk more about that. We wish you well this evening, be safe out there. Thank you, Kittle. Thank you so much.
Can you bring up a question I'd like to ask, though? What way do we give basically hearsay information? We're going to go out and we're going to listen, we're going to listen to experts and How do we weigh that?
Well, let's come back to that one we had the discussion about the session. I want to just finish up with, with the conversation with Dan about the origins, and just maybe brainstorm together a little bit about what, what impact will this broader realization of the fact that this unfunded mandate, which everybody agrees it kind of feels like, didn't come from the General Assembly, but came from the State Board by means of regulation? Some people, I think, will shrug their shoulders and say, "Yeah, so what?" And there'll be some legislators who will say, "What?" Because remember, legislators guard their prerogatives, their legislative prerogatives, rather fiercely. And they don't take kindly to people who do things that look like making law, no matter how it's done, if it's not done by elected people. You know, and the difference between them and us is, they stood for election and got chosen. We have not done that. And that's, you know, a huge difference in our democracy. So I don't, I think this Board has a tendency to minimize understanding the optics of what it does and how it strikes the legislature, Rule twenty-two-hundred being a great example. And the Board still, at least the previous Board, seemed quite blasé about getting their knuckles wrapped in that way. So I guess one of the questions I have is, I've been thinking about is, how will this change the environment in the legislature to kind of have this knowledge out there more? How will it change their discussions about P B L? And to, I think Peter's question, what's to be done about what needs to be improved, if anything, about P B L? I'm nowhere near ready to say something needs to be improved. I mean, I think we need to remain tabula rasa about all that. But at some point, there could come a need for change in the way it's being deployed or what have you. And the question will be, well, who's going to do that? Under whose authority will that happen? And I hear some of you saying, "Well, we should revise the E Q S." Well, maybe, but probably it would be politically prudent to have the legislature give some guidance about what they'd like to see change going forward. Any thoughts about sort of the politics of this as it moves forward?
I think it's going to be interesting if we're going to bring this up at Rattlin', and we're just, we're going to get some feedback, I think, from the front line.
Well, we're not going to bring up the origins.
No, 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 but I mean, in terms of just how they're responding to this, isn't that part of what we're discussing down there?
It is. It's all we're talking about is P B L. Tell us about it.
Right, right.
I'm just thinking, your questions stimulate, you know, from a political perspective. You know, it would be hard, let's, let's say the Agency solely made regulations for education in the state. It would be hard for me to conceive how the Agency would make regulations that didn't flow from statutory authority. So we couldn't, as a state agency, or we'd be called, there's numerous processes by which we'd be called on the carpet, for creating regulations that don't originate from some sort of statutory idea.
Right.
That's tightly controlled.
Yes, it's, it's rather frowned on.
Yeah, right. So we couldn't, you know, in this case, we, you could imagine a construct where the delegation was, you know, to build, was reading the history, Agency of Education, you create school quality standards and figure out, you know, and hold people accountable for meeting them, and we're satisfied with that. You know, if there wasn't some intermediary body that was sort of involved in that public connection. So I think it will provoke that conversation around rules. I think, you know, the, back to the issue of, you know, you have ideas of where the State Board should situate itself relative to the larger idea of who formulates education policy in the state. This will, I think, provoke a conversation about curriculum. You know, so we can, we can talk about policy in a general way, but the very specific political issue of curriculum is a hot issue in our country. Right? So who, and we saw it with Act One last session, where, you know, the legislature created an ethnic studies group, and as part of that deliberation, there was a lot of conversation around, will this group be charged with curriculum? You know, curriculum, a lot of the advocates thought they'd be promoting curriculum adoption, and we had to, you know, the construct that we currently have, it is the State Board adopts standards, and then the locals create curriculum. But we have similar issues related to civics education, sex education, sexual health education. So, you know, this issue of who get, you know, we can play out the roles in a general way in policy, but we, if we take a very specific task about who controls what gets taught in schools...
Yeah.
Well, that gets us right back to the Act forty-six.
Well, and we can maybe emphatically say, "Well, here's the construct we've had historically. We've changed stuff with one fifty-three or forty-six by making that more centralized at the S U level." Should the legislature be creating curriculum? Right? We probably say no.
Well, the legislature...
But just to play it out, should the legislature create, some states the legislature does, you know?
Yeah, they do.
Should the State Board be promulgating curriculum? And, you know, educators in the audience would be rolling your eyes equally as well as you rolled your eyes, I mean, legislature doing it. So, but what would be the role there? You know, in the Agency, if we come back to the regulatory authority, should we be creating curriculum? We don't, you know, I'll roll my eyes at that. We don't have the curriculum expertise anymore. That was long since dismantled, I think, under Commissioner Kate, when we took Visma apart. You know, some of that was outsourced and so forth. So we don't have, you know, like a math specialist to build math curriculum and so forth. Many agencies do. So to play out this issue of who should create curriculum and who, how it should be promulgated relative to standards is a great practical matter to consider the political background.
I'm currently reading Hamilton, and it's like the Federalist Discussion and everything.
Right.
And I can easily foresee this Board taking on the question of curriculum.
Yeah, that's a high-level issue.
And conducting some inquiries, and coming away with a portrait of how it's really done now.
Yeah.
done now, how it's done in other states that are sister states, and even some suggestions, not action on our part, but some suggestions to the General Assembly or to the agency, with some things that might be changed, under the authority, not of this board, but under the authority of the legislature or the agency. That kind of inquiry could be, I mean, what I'm suggesting is trading hard power, which is, we can write the damn rule, for soft power, which is, we gather really useful information and give it to people who have authority. And that seems to me to be the direction we're moving in and that we need to move in. By the way, just parenthetically, in the proposal that we have been presenting around, the board retains authority over EQS. The board retains rule-making authority over EQS. It's not, while the board proposes to give up many, many particulars, I have a, I think I might have sent to you a laundry list of all of the rules that we do, and they're stuffed down to what's a school day, snow day, and what's not. I mean, it's just unbelievable, it's not unimportant, but it's not policy. And so all of that stuff would become the agency's authority, not ours. I mean, after all, they have to implement it, why the heck shouldn't they get to amend it?
We would keep the EQS, which also has this clause that the school shall follow the rule that meets the standards adopted by rule of the State Board. So we go around in a circle.
Right, and we, we plan to leave that. There's a lot of things in there about that the, the State Board shall rule this and shall rule that, and those need to change. That's something that needs to stay.
Well, that's the big dilemma, the big philosophical question.
Um, yeah, we'll talk about that. So, all right, well, this has been useful, and thank you to Dan, who I'm sure will be back. Let's move on to...
Can I just, just to sort of, I mean, Dan's not here in closure, are, are we, we're going to be discussing this, I'm not, and we don't have to go down to Ruttland and, 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 and get into all this in terms of how we got here, or what's, but do we, are we going to be setting a, a course or how to deal with this, or in conjunction with the agency, or how are we gonna leave this?
Let me, all right, that gets us into what are we doing with this project?
Yes, yes, sir.
So, remember, this project arose out of, really, the retreat discussion in which we said, we need to be able to step back, look at big-picture stuff, and stop spending so much time Mickey Mouse-ing and looking over the shoulder of the agency about things that they do perfectly well without our input. For example, independent school approval, that we spent 45 minutes on today, I doubt that we added very much value to that approval. So what we're proposing is that this board would no longer approve independent school. It's in statute right now as one of our obligations. We would change statute, so we are no longer making that approval, the agency. So, so the general idea is that the board frees itself of a lot of housekeeping stuff to which it adds little or no value, and opens up the space to do something like we're gonna do in January, go and find out about something that seems to be on the minds of people, or is on our mind, or in Dan's mind. You know, the average person's probably not talking much about curriculum, but certainly educators are, and this board would like to. So the project on, on the 15th of January is to go do a sort of test run, not only of gathering information, but what do we do with the information? And the big difference between the way it used to be and the way I'm advocating that it become is that we gather information and we then take it to the people who are to know about, and who are equipped to do something about it. And so, the, as I've outlined to you many times, the January meeting will result in the preparation of a report by this board, not by agency staff. We need to learn to stand on our own and speak for ourselves. A report by this board that will be written up and we'll all agree on. It might be three pages, it might be six pages. I'm not talking about, you know, one of these things. This was a year's worth of work with a lot of staff. We're not talking about that. And our job will be to go to the general, to the two committees, and tell them what we were told. Not what we think, but what we were told. We're not being asked to give our opinions. We're being asked to say, what did you see? What did you learn? And of course, there'll be, well, we learned that some people feel this way and some people feel that way. I mean, we're gonna report the differences we see and hear, but we're, we're not trying to go there with a plan. This is what you should do. If they ask us, after having presented that information, what do you recommend we should do? Well, I think we probably ought to huddle a little bit before anybody answers that question, because then that becomes an official board position, which we need to be very careful that we do that by consensus. So that sort of...
Yeah, can I ask, is there any concern on your part about how this PBL is being applied, or how, how, how students are, are, are graduated? There is no universal, single method. Do you have concerns about how that, how this is being rendered at this point, at the, at the school level?
Yeah, I think my specific, I have one concern, and it came from just an incidental conversation with a group of guidance counselors, and it pertains more to inter-high-school movement of students, as opposed to the college admissions piece. We, because of the, the differences among the high schools, we, you know, we deal with students moving in between high schools all the time.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's really, they were expressing to me the challenge, and they wanted to come to the State Board at some point, but it's really challenging for them to do that piece of it. And we've been thinking about, you know, we, the SLDS project, which is essentially, you know, this, this huge behemoth of a data project we've inherited, it's about a six-year trajectory, we think there's some room for improvement there in terms of data collection. The, we're contemplating doing a RFI, which is the first step before doing an RFP, an RFP, Request for Proposal, RFI, Request for Information. So we're thinking of doing an RFI this winter for a statewide student information system as a way of addressing some of the data collection issues. And one of the things we would endeavor to do possibly through that is to sort of standardize the format of a Vermont transcript from high school, which might help with some of that inter-high-school work, but that's still a couple of years off if we were to go now. We're gonna investigate it, I think, for other reasons, but this specific one is one of my concerns. We can, I think we could also address that through just getting people together and saying, look, here's, here's a base, let's come see if we can design a template that would work better.
Thank you.
Thank you. So to, so what I want to do is go over with you what was in this two-page, three-page overview about the information gathering session. In other words, this is a primer for what we're gonna be doing at the January meeting. And I think you all have that, and if not, this copy's available over there. So we pretty much covered the introduction and how we got to, why are we talking about PBL? I just wanna review with you and reemphasize in the paragraph called overview on the first page, what's the purpose? And we need to really keep these purposes clearly in mind, and everything flows from these purposes. The first purpose is to give the board some experience in an information, in conducting an information gathering session on an educational topic, where we go out on our own and do that. And the second is to, from that information gathered, prepare a report, and in this case, present it to the two committees of the House and Senate, Education. In other future cases, it might be that our report goes to the secretary, it might be it goes to the governor, it might be it goes any number of places, but in this case, you can have this copy if you want, Bill. In, in this case, the, the idea is to report to the, the two committees. You want one, Bill?
Yeah.
You got one?
Sorry.
I'm sad.
Okay.
I've got four.
Here comes five. Yeah, we're all set, I think. Bill, do you get one?
Yeah, I'm sad.
On the interruption, if I can tell your attention please, all afternoon activities for Royal Union High School are canceled today. All activities are canceled today for after-school, so if you are a Royal student, please make sure to get on the bus at 3:05. Thank you.
I guess we're out of here. So, given those two purposes, you know, the project is over when we've made our report, and then on to the next thing. I mean, it could be that we make the report and the General Assembly asks us to do something further. Who knows? We'll, we'll get there. Out of those two purposes, there are sort of five steps. One is to organize the session, which is, which organizing is going on right now. You can imagine if there are to be 12 expert witnesses, you don't call them up a week before the meeting and say, can you show up? So already those lists are being compiled. Second, we can be in the meeting. Third, we prepare a report. Fourth, we present it to the House and Senate committees. And fifth, we stand back and say, well, so how did that go? This was a first attempt at something, and did we succeed? How did we, how did we do well? What did we do well, and what could be done better? The paragraph about impartiality is, is important and maybe a little controversial. We're, we're not trying to solve a problem. It's not what we're doing. The problem solving, if, if by anybody is gonna be, the first opportunity is the House and Senate committees. Our, our job is to gather information and to do so as, as impartially and fairly as You know, and there are a whole lot of sides on this stuff. I mean, you, you probably already get email and calls from people who feel passionately, especially people who feel passionate against PBL. I guess I'm gonna ask you to, between now and January, start ignoring that stuff. I would encourage you not to read up on PBL, because our job is to go in there, y'all wanna know what tabula rasa means, clean slate? Our job is to be impartial and to go in without a lot of opinions, and frankly, a lot of what's called information that may not be even accurate. So this would mean, basically, just avoid conversations about it. I get some people writing to me, and I'm about to respond to them saying, thank you very much, but frankly, I'm not reading any of your stuff until after the hearing. Because we, if we're gonna write a report, it's gonna be our collective report. It has to be based only on what we all heard together. So as interesting as Sabina's experience is, it, we want it to be on the public record. We want it to be that what we hear is testimony given to us. In designing this, we obviously want to hear from knowledgeable people. This is not, this is not like Act 46, kinda where just anybody who had any opinion could show up and express it. We're trying to gather factual information, not opinions, not hearsay, but facts from people who actually have had hands-on experience with it, whether they're students, or teachers, or administrators, theorists, it doesn't matter. We want to hear from people who are what you might call knowledgeable people.
In-state, out-state.
In-state, in-state. We have one day, we have six hours, we're gonna, I'm sure we're all gonna wish we had done more, but I, I would suggest that we have to limit this to in-state. I hope we'll hear from different parts of the state, but frankly, we're interested in Vermont's experience.
So, I guess, that's the question, is it 12 knowledgeable people?
Yes.
How are we vetting knowledgeable and knowledgeable from schools that have just implemented this, it sounds like, you know, like CBU is on a trajectory that other schools may not certainly be on?
Right.
So how are we gonna elicit people who might feel like they're not there to come and speak, you know, openly about their experiencing, experiences, struggling? And then we also have independent schools who don't use proficiency, proficiency CBL at all.
Right, right. And, okay, so I've decided, I've thought, why would we talk to independent schools if they don't use it? So that rules that out, but as far as, if you, if you, if you look at, on, on page three, I identified sort of that we want to hear from advocates as well as critics, we want to hear from theorists as well as practitioners, we want to hear from administrators as well as frontline educators, we want to hear from students as well as educators, we want to hear from schools that are far down the road, and schools that ain't.
And probably got guidance counselors, if that's possible.
Well, I'm, I'm not calling out the specifics, I'm just giving you categories of people, and we will have to choose 12. Where we'll get the names? I've also indicated to you who we've written to and invited to give us names. We've written to and invited the Vermont Superintendent's Association, the Vermont Principals Association, the Vermont School Boards Association, Vermont NEA, Vermont Curriculum Leaders Association, Vermont Agency of Education, and the Tarrant Foundation. They are, they have this background, they know what we're looking for. They will give us the names and one paragraph summaries about the people they know about that they would suggest we hear from. That'll probably wind up being 20 or 30 different individuals. If anybody wants to join me and put in the hours and the work that it's gonna take, then we need to vet that list of 30 to 60 people and choose 12. And the goal...
All sales size, I understand.
We're not concerned, conducting a survey of, of any statistical character at all. We're simply doing a hearing.
Truth is, efficient as we can, and what the agenda is, how that, in terms of how do we know that we're giving credit for?
How do we know? We, we, we won't know until, we, we'll do our best based upon what we understand to be the background and point of view of that person. Yeah? Kim?
Um, will we have any data regarding current status of, like, will there be any empirical data?
Yeah, good question.
I was curious about data around schools that are doing really well and how resourced they are. Like, is there a correlation between how resourced the school could be?
Right.
And how well that they're implementing this initiative?
And the question is, how do you measure well?
Well, even, even distribution, and is there geographic concentration of those who have fully implemented versus not at all? And again, I think we need some frame of reference, because I think one of the things, thinking as a, on the ground, as a board member, we're expecting that we were, under the understanding, there should be proficiency graduation something for our students when they graduate from our high school this year. That will be a main asset. And so by virtue of convening this conversation, what are schools to expect might happen with respect to the deadline for implementation of this graduation year?
We can't speculate about that.
I think it's reasonable to speculate.
I'm sorry?
I think it's reasonable to speculate.
It is reasonable for us.
About the impact of convening a conversation on something that has a deadline to be effective in June of 2020.
Well, what's the flip side? What if you're not? What if they don't?
Yeah, no, no, I'm not saying, because there's no, there's no consequences of not doing it or doing it.
But that's, has nothing to do with us gathering information. I mean, that has certainly consequences, the General Assembly needs to think about that, but that's getting ahead, that's sort of trying to identify problems and solve them.
And I'm not trying to draw a direct parallel, but last year, the work, the districts that were being forced to unify, and then the potential for delay, and the inefficiency of use of time by virtue of that conversation, being, oh, maybe we're gonna be able to delay this. I don't know that that served anybody, so I, I am not advocating one way or the other. I'm just saying there was, um, there's a wide range of implementation that's had a wide range of impact on students and families and otherwise-
Indeed.
-schools and resources. Acknowledging that, understanding that range is really important. You really just know what you know. And if we are convening this, I think we want there to be some evidence to share what the perspective is statewide that might include some data. Like, who is reporting proficiency grades? That's a yes or no.
Yeah, I agree. I think, and I'm glad you're back, Dan, it, part, part of what we might see if the agency or Tarrant Foundation or somebody could be helpful on is to give us sort of an atlas of fact, um, about PBL, the extent to which it's deployed or not deployed. No judgments-
No.
-no opinions, just-
Do we have that, Dan? Does it exist?
Yeah, I don't know. We have some of that. I think, you know, I was gonna make the point that we, uh, around the 2020 compliance issue, we do, uh, right now through the integrated field review process, you know, we are asking these questions, like, "Where are you with the process?" You know? We also had anticipated, uh, we couldn't settle on how to do it, but we were gonna kinda quantify people's progress on this through the report card portal. Are you doing PLPs, yes or no?
Yeah.
It was about as good as we could get with that, because there's all different levels of what is a good PLP or not. But we could, if we know that's where you're going, we can start assembling that as best we can, because I think it would be-
Between now and January.
Yeah, well, I don't know about that, but-
Well, that's why I was wondering, just to give a frame of reference in our conversation-
We have, we have a team that's really got their fingers on the pulse of this, so they might be able to put something together, but I don't wanna be able to speak for them right now.
Yeah, well, it's a lot to ask real fast, but I think it would be ideal if the board had essentially a briefing pack before the hearing that was, um, not testimony for or against or any of that, but-
The facts.
-just the facts mail.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh-
And not just for the board's identification. I think it should be presented, just simply so-
Sure.
-it becomes part of the testimony or evidence, whether somebody's here for the entire day of the eight hours or however long it's gonna be-
Right.
-or they, um, they have a stage set for sort of what the law is and isn't, and what the regulations are and aren't, and what the current implementation reality is.
Sort of a fact sheet on PLP.
A fact sheet would be terrific.
I don't know if we can do that for January. I think we probably could do that for February, but-
Yeah, I, I think that's unfortunate. No, totally understand. I just think it's, uh, I work, well, whatever. I think otherwise we get advocacy positions without fact. And that is, I think, a concern for the quality of what we can-
Yeah, you're gonna-
Present out to whomever wants to listen when they're done.
I think it's, you know, where I'm-
Well, it depends on facts.
I think it depends on how you frame the inquiry. I mean, to your questions about how to frame it, I think, the, if you're framing it, uh, you know, like, we, we're questioning whether this is a good idea or not.
Not at all.
You know, you're setting yourself up for that kind of advocacy thing. On the other hand, if you say, "We're trying to understand, you know, this initiative relative to, um, you know, the larger, uh, conversation we intend to provoke around who controls curriculum or who, how are we ensuring that we're offering an expanded curriculum in the 21st century for a rural state? You know, what does that mean? And how do thus do that? And this might be useful for us to inform, you know." So depending on how you frame it, you could sort of neutralize some of that polarization.
Right. Yeah, I think if the, if the, if the, if the request of the witnesses, "Tell us your thoughts about PLP," that's about all we need to say. Um, and not say, "Is it working well or not?" Just, if, if we, if we choose a balanced mix of witnesses, um, there'll be a few in there who are critics, I hope. Um, but I sure don't want it to be loaded one way or another. Um, and, uh, we wanna try to find sort of representation from kind of all the corners of this universe in twelve people. And I, I know, it's a, a long reach. You could do a week of hearings. Isn't it, let me just move beyond that and say, and, and I think, Kim, you're right, an almanac of facts about PBL in Vermont would be terrific, and it sounds like it's gonna be very hard to pull that together. I think in the course of the testimony, we'll get some sense of, "Oh, here's a school that's really very mature in this, and here's a school, I hope we'll be hearing from a school that is very immature in this, and has not done very much, and what's that look like and why?" In addition to hearing from twelve knowledgeable people, they get, in that case, you'd have, we have, the, the current plan is that the he- hearing, the board would convene at 12:30 on, uh, Wednesday, the 15th of January, in Rutland, at Rutland High School. The first hour and a half would be devoted to board business, including the Act 173, continued discussion. And we, by two o'clock, we would be done all that. And from two, from two o'clock to 4:30, two and a half hours, we would hear from six knowledgeable individuals, twenty minutes each, including, within that twenty minutes, time for answers to questions. We would sort of basically encourage, people will be given a guide as to how to make their presentation, and the guide will tell them, "You need to get your message across to us in fifteen minutes, because there's gonna be at least five minutes of questions." I'm also gonna ask witnesses to prepare a written summary of the message or takeaways that they want us to get from what they said. So we'll have that in writing, and hopefully, that would get to you within a couple days before the hearing. Given the timeframe here, it's gonna be real hard to get stuff to you much before that.
It's not about the media, it's just a public meeting, and that makes it part of the strategy.
We very definitely want the media there, very definitely want the public there. Part of the goal of this is not just to educate us, but to educate anybody who comes in off the street. Because, you know, part of the reason we have all these big arguments is that we don't know how the other side sees things. So there's benefit in all, in folks who are advocates one way or another, from hearing from advocates who are on the other side. And I'm hopeful that we can render a public service in that way. E- even to that, so let me just continue with the plan of the day. At, so two hours are devoted to expert testimony, and then there would be a thirty-minute period for public comment. And in that period, and I'm not sure, I, I think we might like to keep some flexibility as whether we make that period at the end or halfway through. I'm sort of interested in trying to use that as a lure to get people there earlier and then have to listen. Because there's a, a lot of people would benefit from having to listen. And, uh, but we would invite the public to come up and give their views. They'd have thirty minutes. If there's ten of them, well, they each get three minutes. Um, if there are fifty, well, there're gonna be some people who don't get to talk. I would even, depending on how it feels, I would even attempt to try to say, "If you're here as an advocate for PBL, indicate that on your name. If you're here as an opponent of PBL, indicate that on your name," and we're gonna go back and forth. Because I, I frankly don't want to encourage a whole lot of advocates of one point of view to say, "Let's go there and over one of numbers."
Maybe we don't ask them if they're an advocate or an opponent, if we don't.
Maybe we don't, but then you might find that you just, that you have ten advocates in the room and fifty opponents. And frankly, I, I think in that case, it would be wise if we could hear from some of both sides. I don't know how to manage that, but it's something I-
I experienced, and it brings out the advantage of one side or the other.
Well, there, you know that the opponents are gonna show up. They're really, they're, anyway. After, at, at 4:30, we stop. We break and have supper. I'm calling it supper because I don't want it to be dinner. That is to say, I don't want it to be fancy. Um, and the, the people at the culinary arts program there know that, and they're still making something too fancy, but they know what we're trying to do. I also told them to make the price really low, because we'd like to invite the public to join us. So we'd like to sort of, we have some PR to do about this, but I would love this to be, "Come have supper with the state board." Won't that be fun?
That would be so much fun.
Well, I think so, too.
Yes, that'd be great.
I love that stuff. But I used to be at politics.
There you go. Perfect.
That's where I did most of my campaigning, was church supper.
And know the value of food in that regard.
Yeah. So, um, and certainly we will, uh, any witnesses who will stay around, we wanna have them join us at our expense for supper.
So the, if we could get a flyer-
Yeah.
-together sooner than later-
Yeah.
-and then start circulating it-
Right.
Um, because I think the, a lot of people from that area would be more likely to come for public comment, and people from the Kingdom aren't gonna drive there.
Sorry?
We've talked to the Herald.
Yeah, of course. We have a lot of PR to do, and if, one of you wants to volunteer, uh, with making that happen, uh, in collaboration with me, I'm welcome to, you could have. Well, I, that's my next call, is, this is gonna be, this whole thing lands, lands in Rutland, first because Dan suggested Rutland and several other places, and second because the superintendent of Rutland is a dear, personal friend of mine. And so my call to him was well received, and I'm sure I can turn to David and say, "Will you make sure everybody in Bennington, Rutland, and Addison County knows about this?" Supper will be over at, we'll try to end it at 5:20, so at least fifty minutes for supper. Try to resume at 5:20, go till 7:50. Another two and a half hour period, same deal. Six more expert witnesses and s- and thirty minutes more for public comment. Stop at eight fifty, seven fifty, ten minutes of, "All right, what are we gonna do next?" It'll just be, that actually takes about two minutes. You know what we're gonna do next? We're gonna write a report, get ready to report to the General Assembly. Um, and, so we're done at eight o'clock. Long drive home for you.
Oh, yeah.
You? Easy for you? So that's, that's, that's the plan. We've talked about ways to improve it. I think Kim's idea of objective data is great. I think your idea's about publicity, absolutely right. What other ways to make this success?
I think, uh, I just wanna write after it's done.
Yeah, that's gonna be a bit of a project.
Yeah.
That's partly why I'm asking people to prepare a written statement in advance. We hope, Connor, it's a board meeting at different hours than you're used to, but we hope you'll be there, so we'll have that record, which will be very valuable to us. Kim?
Um, I was just looking, I was thinking about the genesis of, um, the proficiency idea in employers wanting to see the workforce prepared, from the history that you shared with us. And so I'm wondering, would we want to see that employers are represented in the group in terms, I, I'm thinking a framing question might be, what impact have the, has the requirement for proficiency-based learning graduation requirements had on the educational experience? That probably could be answered from students, parents, teachers, administrators, colleges, for example, admissions-
Admissions, admissions.
So admissions people and employers. I think, I know it's out there that they sort of understand what a profile is of the school they're looking at as an admissions person.
Sure, the admissions people.
And they, so, I, it would be interesting, that perspective, to be represented. I'm not sure how we seek that out. I don't, I don't know if Jay knows, or if you know, Dan, or if it's-
Well-
-german to the conversation, but I think part of the reason for doing this was that, I think employers wanted to see that students had a proficiency as they graduated in key capacity to do the work. And, and I know as a parent, you worry, "How is this gonna look on a transcript? What does this mean for my kid? How will an admissions office evaluate it?"
Right, right. Well, I think employers and universities are two very different animals. Um, and I think the employers might have some theoretical views about whether this is going to be a good thing, but they can't possibly know it. Because they, there are no kids who've graduated yet who've gone through this.
Um, I'm wondering, the kids who graduate from tech programs are, are ready? I don't know, sometimes-
Well, I was gonna mention, you know, one of the, I should've highlighted, but one of the other origins of the concept comes from CTE, because CTE has a long history of being based on competency or proficiency. I mean, all these programs in this building are aligned to industry competencies and proficiencies.
Right, right.
So that, that whole program runs on being able to demonstrate proficiency and industry skills.
Which means you don't get to buy a scrape in one fashion.
Yeah.
But I think having those two perspectives is helpful, because they are the, the consumers of the product we put out of our educational system. And they are, if you're a parent, this kid is going to college, that's the worry you have-
Well, that's a huge source of-
-consumed-
-consternation in this state.
Our reporting can't be consumed-
Right, right.
-by those colleges. And, you know, I think, whether or not that's true, that is the perception, and depending on how many college tours you've been on, you get varying answers from the admissions folks on what they understand of what they see.
Jay?
I should say, we'll, we send, so names you, this name you will send students, uh, traditional IG students that are living under a proficiency-based system, so they can figure their path.
Yeah.
Send us a kid who got into Yale, and he can tell you how.
We gotta run, we gotta first in, so that, we gotta list, she gotta-
Yeah, how about Princeton, really? Someplace really good.
Yeah.
But maybe an admissions person from even UVM or-
Or Middlebury or-
Middlebury or, you know, any of those places, and understanding how they look at what they get, what they're looking for.
I, I, I think your idea is a great one. I think, my next thought, though, is be prepared to be a bit frustrated, because we're not going to address every dimension of this. I mean, we simply won't have time and tal- talent to do so. So there would be some blank pieces that we can't answer very well. It would be great if we could have a college admissions person there, or maybe just a guidance person who's dealing with college apps and, um, and has, has a fairly highly-developed program.
I see Joe Sixpack, I'm, I'm serious.
Well, I frankly don't think Joe Sixpack is highly knowledgeable about PBL. Joe Sixpack would be welcome in the public comments, but remember, we're trying to invite twelve knowledgeable people, uh, which could include a, a teacher who, who's done it and thinks it's the pits. But we're not asking-
Oh, okay.
You know, we-
Scratch that.
We're, we're looking for expertise and knowledge, hands-on knowledge. But we certainly will hear from some laypeople who have their opinions based upon whatever facts they may have. Uh, I, I think that's imperative that we do that. I suspect we will engender some frustration that, "What do you mean? There's sixty of us here, and you're only giving us thirty minutes."
Wouldn't we be thrilled if there were sixty people at any meeting we convened, other than your Act 46 time? It would be great.
Yeah, yeah.
And to be lamenting that problem on the fly.
Yeah, so I think that this will be, uh, it's gonna feel like a, a weekend trip to Paris. You're gonna feel like, "Holy mackerel, I just scratched the surface."
That is.
But just to think of something that we all do. We're gonna say, "Wow, I should've been there for three weeks," and, or three years, and we're gonna say, "We just scratched the surface." But this is just a start. This is an exercise in figuring out how to do this and getting good at it, and proving to the General Assembly that we can be useful to them with the information we gather for Any further thoughts about this topic?
We'll have to reserve some time to say, to work on what is the product gonna look like.
We will, and I think we're gonna have to do that offline, because we cannot wait until our mid-February meeting to have that conversation. We need to be able to get to the General Assembly no later than mid-February, or else you just missed that bump. So, um, yeah, in the week immediately after, well, as soon as the tape is out, and as soon as, and we hope we'll have good audio tape, um, as well. I think we're all gonna have to, people are gonna have to do some work offline, um, not in meetings. And I know that that's hard for those of you who have day jobs and families, but until we have our own, um, highly-paid staff, it's gonna be up to us. Anything else for the good of the group?
Not necessarily on this, but on the theme of highly-paid staff. I was trying to think about other boards and constructs-
I was trying to think about other boards and constructs, and as we think about a model, if we were independent and before we're flailing without any resources and with independence, it might be worth thinking about other models and just, like, VPIC relies on the resources of the treasurer's office, VEMR's. I was thinking about other boards I serve on, that's a very limited universe of boards and models, but it might be worth considering if there are other similar such board arrangements that have an independence without an administrative staff. I don't envision us having the financial resources for that, or honestly, the need for a full-time employee as an administrative resource to just the state board of ed. So thinking about whether that's a contracted arrangement or how, I don't know.
Yeah.
I just don't know. I think it's something to consider before casting ourselves free without resources and knowing we don't get financed.
Well, as I said, I'm working on some of those possibilities now in terms of getting some staff support. I think it's a reach, not a lot of deep pockets around.
Center for the Study of Vermont.
I'm not familiar with that group.
UVM.
It's UVM?
Yep.
And maybe Dan has some ideas about, you know, where there's a pocket of resources at St. Mike's or Middlebury or any of the schools that, I mean, it's probably not too hard to get student interns, but, you know, student interns don't draft reports for you, not reports that you'd want to use. But there's certainly assistance with research, compiling information for us, briefing the board. You know, for example, the Atlas, if we had some student interns and they had six months, they probably could do that for us.
We're not going to be in a place to do that kind of original data project.
It's, I think it's going to be, what's the expression, on a, on a, on a wing and a prayer for a while.
Any possibility of editing the video and putting together a little 10-minute?
Boy, that's a fascinating idea.
I mean, we may get some pithy comments.
Yeah, yeah. That's a great idea.
Remember ETV has got a studio in Rutland?
Well, Connor's going to be there.
Well, too much ain't enough.
Okay, okay.
That's iconic, dude.
Oh, ETV, yeah, we certainly should invite them to be there. Yeah, yeah.
So if we, if we were to do that with your material, we could do that on our own if we wanted to go through and just, just...
Yeah, I mean, you can spread it, or you can...
Yeah.
Yeah, but is there anyone among us who's a competent editor?
No.
No?
Maybe you are.
I mean...
Connor, can we commission you to edit something if I sat down with you in the studio sometime?
Yeah, I'd be glad if you got it started, you know? Yeah, that'd be kind of fun. I'd be glad.
I mean, we could easily, on your...
Burlington?
When you're hearing testimony, you could circle that. I want what she just said.
Yeah, yeah.
Or I'll have what she's having. And, and we could take that list into Connor and say, let's see if we can pick this off and that off. Your fee for that wouldn't be too bad, would it?
That's fine.
Okay. Special price for me, yeah.
Super special dinner.
I think that's a fascinating idea, Peter.
It'd be fun.
Oh, twodbe.
All you need is just, you know, just, you know, these, yeah, and it could be a whole gambit of...
I could even imagine sitting in Cedar Creek Room and having that video running and having a couple board members there and legislators just coming by.
Yeah, on a loop.
On a loop, and say, well, this is what we learned. Here, listen to what this young woman said. That could be pretty damn cool.
Talk to David about money.
Yes. David wants to be very helpful.
Well, he certainly hasn't got enough money at Castleton, or at least they have.
Yeah, unfortunately, he doesn't have that checkbook anymore.
He's Mr. Rutland. Got that hockey rink, amazing.
Well, these, those are great ideas, and I would just encourage you, in the next three or four days, when an idea pops into your head, just drop me an email with it or call me about your various bright ideas. Also, are there any among you who are willing to put in the time to help win down a list of witnesses?
I, I will. I mean, you know, I, I would need to know who I'm looking at, why I'm, you know, not just names.
As I said earlier, there'll be a list of witnesses, and about each person, there will be not a bio, but a profile.
Okay.
This is a student who did this, this is a teacher who has this experience.
Yeah, yeah.
This is a principal who has that experience.
And, and you're, you're requesting that in advance so that...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, good. That may winnow it down, too.
Jay's already working on his list for us, and so is the Tarrant Foundation, so is, Dan has already given me his list. So I've probably got 25 names already. But it's a lot of work to get this done before the first of the year. And you have to be in touch with people, no later than the second or third of January if you want to get a yield.
And we only have a couple of, a couple of days in between, right?
That's right. I know what I'm doing, over the holidays. Thing else?
Talk to the editorial board at the Herald.
Does Herald still exist?
It still exists.
Does it? Silly me.
Actually, the shoppers will carry your stuff, and you can sometimes get some amazingly good publicity out of shoppers. I would have never thought it.
I don't suppose Ted Fisher has any free time?
If you're going to go over to separation, you got to go on.
Suddenly, separation looks pretty good.
I've got him over tasks, especially when the session starts, he's got a full-time job.
I think this is called hoist on your own petard.
He does a good job with his daily...
He sure does. Does that himself every...
We have two in our communications staff.
Oh, okay.
But they, Ted also wears the hat of Legislative Affairs, so it's, it becomes a very challenging area.
Does that go to a wider audience than just us?
Goes to whoever subscribes to it.
Yeah, yeah.
But we have, that becomes a very busy part of the...
I think we can wrap up. It's 2:25.
Great.
Get you home on time. Do I have expense reports from everybody? I don't see one from you, Kim. Jenna?
I did.
Yes, sure, 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 sure. No problem. Thank you all.
Thank you.